In order to do that in sections all along the way. So you're on the email back to the school district because we needed to divide the county into sections of where the students are at so that we can justify that.
Okay, I got an email from the superintendent saying the numbers or whatever for the different areas, yeah. That's the only email I've gotten though.
So you must have got that and not me because he hasn't responded, so he might have responded just.
Well, it didn't have any numbers on it, it was just a.
I got my own phone.
I can't remember if it was from you or from him, but it was.
The original came from me as I'm requesting back.
They're trying to tell Stacy not to put it in my basket, but she just doesn't listen.
So the only thing you're not in on is the call when I called Jack and said, Robert brought this up as we go through the town that Mike and I have been trying to pull in who wants what, what money it's going to take for what. So we started that conversation. He came to that meeting we had just at 4:30 over, this is what everybody thinks they're going to need. And so that's where we're going with it. So we could talk about it more as we talked about.
We intended to get it on the work session to talk more about.
Well, yeah, I was planning on bringing it up with the updates that I had from you, so.
Good. Well, let's, let's talk about it then because you may have something different than what he.
Well, what he's concerned about is he doesn't, he, he wants to know who his contact is so he's not getting conversations from two different groups for two different reasons.
Yeah, and that's what we talked about it with him too. I said, Robert brought it up, so I want to make sure that we're including Robert in all of this, but the conversation over how we allocate it. And, and right now there are three different funding sources that we can possibly use for this. It's coordinating it for the best use and in getting that done. But quite frankly, where Jack's on it is they're not interested in the financial backing, they're interested in the customer base.
Right.
So, and that's more of the conversation we've had as I've reached out to other people over businesses that we, that are a possibility that he can have those conversations with. And that's where we'll take it from here is.
A question, sir.
Austin's brother was interested as we get the word on, out on that. Jack's going to send back a contact to information in the marketing materials so that we can say, and then it's the introduction.
Robert.
So if you know a business, Jack, this is so-and-so from this business.
Okay.
Here's the contact for who you would talk to there. And then they'll follow up and do all of the conversations because they're very.
That's what he's been doing up to this point, the different businesses that I've sent you.
Exactly. So in their e, in the email that backed me, I think it's, it was four or five was all he was asking for. Quite frankly, the difference between four or five contracts and 175,000 is huge to me. So those are conversations that are really worth having over businesses in this area to incentivize that. And then that gives you the opportunity to use that section of money even if we take it one step farther. I know Wasatch Peaks was interested. Um, I'm happy to have that conversation with businesses in Mountain Green that I know are interested.
He's, he's been in touch with Jagi, Jaggy, however you say his name. They've talked to them.
So you've sent him to a few businesses though?
Yes.
And have they committed? Do we know?
No, nobody is firm yet. They're all interested and very excited, but because it's so far down the road.
Well, and I, I said to Jack, like, what's the commitment? And, oh, sorry, we probably ought to get started in this conversation.
Is this part of the second item on the work session? Um, kind of, sort of?
No, but it needs to be added.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and begin our work session. The first item is a discussion of building security.
Robert Darrell wanted to let you know he's going to be a few months later.
Okay. And then Sarah was going to join by phone. All right.
Sarah, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, Sarah. Thanks for joining. So this question, this item just arose in connection with, I guess, a, a payment or a request for payment with respect to a security cameras for the building. And there was different points of view being expressed by members of the council vis-à-vis texting, so I thought, let's go ahead and just discuss it here and see where we're at. So take it you're familiar with?
Jeremy wants the chance to tell his side of the story.
Okay.
It's not really that way, I'm exaggerating.
The floor is yours.
I, I, I was contacted by Zach to get some, talk about getting some cameras him and Bonnie wanted. And I said, well, I want the money for it. Talked to Brett and see if we can get out of the building. And then I got the response back, Brett says it's good to go, let's go ahead and get them ordered. Oh, I did. I marked them all and the boxes are gone. And then the check went through and it turns out, I guess, they want to use it out of COVID money or something.
Yeah.
So now I've got $1,600 for the cameras and know where to fill them.
Yeah, so Brett had indicated to Zach that, oh, yeah, we can do that, we'll just pay for it out of CARES Act funding.
I don't think that was actually said, though.
Yeah, I, that, that's, that's what Zach told me happened, how it got to that point. And I said, well, I don't see that being a CARES Act funding approval. You know, I don't, I don't see that fitting anywhere in these documents I've read. And so probably ought to discuss it at a council meeting, decide how we want to move forward. And then that's when Jeremy comes in, just by the way, the boxes are gone, I have no way to return these. How do you want me to do it? Who's going to pay for it?
And they're all written on locations.
We're at this point, we have two issues. One, how do we want to deal with how it got to this point? And number two, what do we want to do with them now that we have them and who's going to pay for them?
So is there another potential budget source that we could pay them from?
You can name anything you want, pay it out of any, I mean, Jan's probably not going to pay for it, but you're facing mine.
Jan's going to observe his right to be quiet.
My question is, how does one person just say, we're having cameras in the building now, all of a sudden? We've done 75 years without cameras and someone said, order cameras, and we're having cameras now. Who monitors those? Who keeps the recordings? So it's just never talked about in a council level? It was just, let's go get some.
Nothing is ever talked about in a council level.
Six, did you say $1,600 or $7,600?
$1,600.
Okay.
$1,600?
I had in my mind it was $7,600, so I thought it was a different problem than $1,600.
I didn't know what the amount was. You just said it was under $3,000.
Well, I was able to return some parts.
Oh, okay.
And those have already been returned, but the cameras themselves, the boxes are gone. I thought, did the location's written on them?
So are they usable?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so we can still install the system? And what is the proposal for utilizing them? Where are we putting them? What are we using them for?
Actual doorways.
For doorways?
Yep.
And it's just monitoring traffic through the building?
Yeah, it just, it turns on a, a feed whenever it senses motion.
So you're not putting them in the auditorium?
Hmm?
You're not putting them in the auditorium?
Not just the doors. That's what we discussed.
And that's digitally recorded?
Yeah. I mean, we could add 20 cameras.
There's two reasons that I would give. One, I'll tell you, the other one I won't tell you unless it's a closed session. But the one reason was to monitor people that rent the auditorium when they don't clean up so we can prove they didn't clean up and charge them the cleanup fee. But if we're not putting them in the auditorium.
200 bucks, we got another camera and just plug it in.
Not putting them in the auditorium, but doesn't do something good there.
Yeah, that's the first I've heard about.
But, but I, what you're saying is if we wanted to do that, we could buy another camera for $200 that would integrate into the system and we could do that.
Oh, yeah. Or we could just take one of the door, one of the other ones.
So how many do we have altogether?
Three.
Six?
Six doors.
Oh, six.
Six, one for each door in the building.
Okay.
So there's already, I noticed there's a camera down by the courtroom already.
Yeah, those are controlled by the courts. We have no access to any of those.
So they monitor those.
Not ours either.
I, I mean, from a monitoring perspective, I don't think you have to monitor it unless there's an issue and then you go back and look at the, at the tape.
That's the way cameras are used in our building.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Something shows up missing, they go back and look at the video.
And, and again, then it depends on what type of system you have, the storage capacities, longevity, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the, the system, it's, it's our bill. And it's a 30-day storage backup. I did have memory sticks and stuff that I've returned that would allow us to keep them definite. So that was what got it up closer to the 3,000. So got it, was able to return those, but.
So, so all the stuff you've returned, it still allows us to use the system?
Correct, for 30 days of backup, yeah.
Okay.
If we decided we needed more than 30 days of backup, you'd have to purchase that other.
They purchase SD cards and USB sticks, that's not.
So is there a DVR unit that it's connected to or it's all on the cloud?
So, I, I mean, I think if we have it, and we're, we've written on our cameras and thrown out our boxes, then we're, we're obligated to pay for it. So I would think we could just pay out of our general fund budget account.
So you have to do the credit card purchase and I believe it was paid for out of Brett's budget?
Out of Brett's, yeah, because that's where they said to put it.
But, but that raises the question, why is a department requesting it and then having it paid for out of another budget?
And that was the conversation I had with Zach. I said, Zach, it's not that Brett is, he has the authority to purchase $1,200 for the stuff out of his budget without counsel approval.
16.
16, whatever it is. He was under the threshold is the way the conversation went. I said, what he doesn't have is the authority to then assign that to another department to monitor and take care of that way, to spend that money out of CARES Act fund that only the council is allowed to allow, a lot of the spending of. And I said, if this one's actually one of those issues where there's other things involved rather than just purchasing of a piece of equipment, because you have the concerns that Jan's bringing up and that other people have brought up through that conversation when those text messages went out. And those are things that the council probably ought to discuss in advance of making this type of a decision. I said, this one just crossed a bunch of lines. It wasn't just, can Brett buy a new lawnmower? Absolutely, he can go out and buy a lawnmower, a weedy or a shovel. Doesn't need to come to the council for that. But then the original word we got back is that Brett knew nothing about the cameras and I think he'd forgotten the conversation. Now he says, oh, I think, you know, he called Zach, did we talk about cameras? And Zach explained it to him again, he's like, oh, okay, and so.
And I didn't know there even was a CARES Act until Stacy showed it to me, so this was after when it all went down, so.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Well, the question I got is if we're adding to modifying the building, I mean, that's the other part. Why isn't that coming to the council? I mean, just like the windows, we discussed and voted on the windows that come out of the capital improvement.
Right.
Deal, I mean, why are you all of a sudden just making changes to the courthouse?
Changes to the building, like Jan said, should go to the council. You know, usually they come to me as my portfolio and, and we discuss them and then I usually either bring them myself or have that department bring them to the council to discuss and see if they're.
Which I said, it already happened.
But apparently it didn't. So my question is, you, you've now spoken with the individuals involved. Are, are we clear going forward or do we need to do something more as a council?
Well, I would hope so. I, I don't think it's a bad idea because this isn't the first time we ran into this over my tenure. Lance ended up with a cave for a room before he was ever here because one of the secretaries got migraines and so she came in one weekend and painted the room black. And then came back and complained that it was too dark and we needed to put new lights in. We had just replaced all the lights in the building with the new type of light system six months before. And that kind of stuff has been going on. We might just not be about it, just send an email out to department heads indicating that any alterations or changes to the building need to be approved by the council. Processed. Just as a reminder, don't you think?
I, I, that makes sense.
And then strategically, you have a lot more vandalism at the fairgrounds than you ever do here. I mean, the police station is here, the police are watching this house every time we go in the building, so that's why for one employee to go, you know, it's not IT's fault, but for one employee basically to go to IT and say, let's order these cameras and they're ready to start drilling holes in the wall and you folks don't know about it. I mean, that's, seems like a big deal.
And they had one other reason, again, I won't bring that up in this open forum, but they had one other reason that they wanted to do it. And that needs to be discussed by the council on how that type of situation needs to be handled also, because that's not the only way to handle it either.
So question, so can we use these? Can these be mounted at the fairgrounds?
Sure.
I mean, so I, I mean, if we're gonna.
We already have some in the library on the same account.
If we're going to end up keeping them, I'd just soon, I mean, personally, I'd just soon, let's look at where we can utilize them the best. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the huge issue is at the courthouse.
Full-time internet at the fairgrounds yet, or is it?
No, he said he's been trying to contact you. Your, his salesman's been trying to contact you and hasn't been able to reach them.
Who?
From all west.
No, tell me.
Okay, I'll tell them that they must have their own number.
Just give him my cell number.
Will be.
Yeah.
I mean, if we, if we've got issues somewhere else, I'd just soon stick them where we got the issue, so.
I had not thought of that.
There's the other issue, obviously, that we can discuss in a closed session if you think it's employment-related. And then we can make that decision. With respect to a memo going to the department heads, I don't have any issue with that. Is that something you want to prepare? Do you want the whole council to look at it or?
Sure, I can prepare it and send it out to you and then I think it should come from you, but I don't mind writing it and you can edit it, make it sound right.
Okay.
I don't have to send any of my emails or nothing.
My first impression was the issue was whether or not this was appropriate for the CARES Act money, one of the issues.
I, I don't think it does. Nothing that I've read would indicate that.
Unless, unless the reduced presence of employees in the building elevated the security risk of the people at the building.
People come to work every day, there's not a reduced. That's what I thought.
I just saw the request for laptop computers so everybody can work from home. I was thinking everybody working from home.
I, I was thinking maybe that's another topic on the work session I haven't heard about yet.
No, it just showed up today.
Well, that's brainstorming on how to use CARES money in the future. I don't know.
Which I think, you would ask with the last council, we don't have any one of these ideas. And I don't think that was one of the topics that we talked about. So maybe the council needs to get better direction on how you want ideas for uses of money. You know, that you're going in one direction and it's not, you know, there's things that are thinking outside of plots.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, all right, so we're going to end up purchasing these cameras?
We already have them.
Okay, so we've already purchased them. So what's our radius? What I'm looking at is we now have new tennis, pickleball courts in Mountain Green, we have them over at the fairgrounds. Can we utilize them?
As long as they have internet.
You have to have internet to the area.
Yeah, as long as the DVR is in the cloud.
You can have a camera there, but unless you're going to hook a wire to it and do live feed, you've got to have the backup capability through.
I mean, I guess if you have the wire attached to your.
Yeah, all the way to your.
So, so they're wireless?
All the way back to the camera building.
To be on a Wi-Fi system.
Yeah. We do have three base stations, so we could put one at each place. We just have to have internet at those locations.
We already know the fairgrounds is tough to get right now.
I don't see you getting fiber there.
No.
Any realistic point.
Now, we can, we can get CenturyLink there. We, because they have it in that, in the campground. CenturyLink, but it's a very slow five.
They can't do fiber there? They did fiber here.
Yeah, they, they won't do it because it's too far away from their little house over here, but it's outside their boundaries. I tried for five years.
I don't love them.
But they will hook up. It's enough to run basically one household.
Well.
Just one step above dialing.
But that's part of what we were discussing with Jack Lockenworth is how, how you could provide internet access at fairgrounds and have that contract at the fairgrounds. That's really what they're looking for more than they are looking for funding sources. They're looking for a contract.
And when we discuss that, there's three county facilities that evidently their salesman's got the wrong number for Jeremy.
But my point here is, I don't think that's the reason not to put them there because I think based on where we're going with the overall direction on several of these items, I think there will be internet access there. But I, I guess.
So are we best off just holding off on installing these until we can determine whether the fairgrounds is the better place if we can get internet service there? Or is there an imminent need to install them here?
Doorways.
Doorways of.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
For all of the doorways into the buildings.
Yeah, for pointing at the door.
From my personal perspective is, we've determined the source of the funding for it. We've determined that there's going to go a memo out so that we don't have the, have to react to something as opposed to approve it. And three, I'm willing to let, I mean, it's your portfolio assignment and, and we can work with Brett and others and come up with the best determination as to where to use them. And if you want to bring that recommendation back to the council for approval, that's great, but I, I don't know that we need to decide that here right now.
No.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the Economic Development Partnership has recommended updates to the Morgan Strategic Economic Plan. Review and discussion of recommendations for updates to the Morgan Economic Plan. Discuss structure. MEDP to the County Economic Development Advisory Board to comply with state requirements.
I've got a question real quick.
Okay.
So where are we bringing, where are we taking $1,600 bucks from?
It's coming out of Brett's budget.
Okay.
My thought is if we need to make that hole later, we'll make adjustments, right?
I assume there's adjustments at the end of every budget process.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so on this item, and Mike, feel free to just leave it in time, but with the, we had talked about the funding for rural grants had been changed through a Senate bill that Senator Sandall out of Box Elder County had written for rural grants. They were doing away with all of the other grant processes and then giving just a block grant out to counties where they could write their own economic development plans for that money as long as they, they could have access to the money, as long as they wrote a plan and had a follow-up on what they were using the money for and it had to be economic, follow their economic plan and it had to follow the structure. So I've sent you all a copy of that. There was a change in the funding, rural grants through the change in budget cuts. The rural grant programs were cut 65%. Go it itself was only 10, 5 to 15, depending on the program, just FYI. So that means we are down to $100,000, which changes the priorities drastically in how we are doing this. So we had originally thought that we would update the strategic plan and go through that process the same way we had done before, but that's an expensive process to go through for anyone, including my free time. Air quotes on free time. So we are looking at updating the strategic plan. I sent it out to everyone. I've got the feedback back from Morgan Economic Development Partnership and their comments on it. So we can go through this strategic plan line by line, add their comments to your comments, and then I can bring it back for approval in the next one, but.
So the other part to this is that with the change, the state now is requiring that we have an economic advisory board that we officially establish and then they advise the county on how to spend those economic development funds.
So, yeah, it works.
So we, we've kind of operated with an advisory board of sorts, that Morgan Economic Development Partnership, which includes representation from the county, the city, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce.
These are who we use currently on the board.
There's our list.
And there's, there's an expansion on this to include a member of the public and a business owner. So that can either be the chamber or business owner. I did have several people who had expressed interest in filling the citizen seat on it, so that is on the plan page.
So is the plan that was included in our packet an existing plan or is this a new proposal with, with changes? Or an existing plan with changes or an entirely new proposal?
So this is the existing plan, the strategic economic plan, this one. So this one was what we presented to the governor. It was finalized for our presentation to the governor, uh, the first of 2018. It was approved by the council at the end of 2017. But it went through, it was almost, why can I never remember his name? He now works for Lehigh City that was our economic development.
Eldridge.
Oh, yeah.
Marlin.
Marlin. Marlin originally facilitated that as a contract, putting it all together, all of the meetings. And basically the, um, they brought in people from the city, the school, the school district, the chamber, workforce development, Weber State, Davis Tech, and did a big meeting and divided us into groups and it was a big process.
Okay. So are you looking just for our, so you said you have comments from others and you can bring those back for us to review those? And you're looking for comments from us with respect to this plan?
Yeah. So as we go through this, to update it, some of these in the short term, the one year, have been completed. There are some that were not, were not completed. There's a, we need to change the wording on the grants. There's a lot of this that needs adjustment and then anything priority-wise, ultimately it has to be approved by the council. The same thing happens with the economic, um, let's see, I want to call it the partnership and it's not, but it's the.
The advisory board?
Advisory board, yeah. They can make recommendations, but it's the, ultimately the approval comes back to the council on that $100,000 grant. But there are definitely steps we have to take in order to qualify for that grant. So this is the first part of that. They wanted it in. I'm a little mad at, at the state, quite frankly, for changing it after and cutting it once we got started, so.
So are there comments from members of the council that you want to pass along now to this?
Are we talking about the plan or are we talking about the board?
Well, I guess both, but let's start with the plan.
So, yeah, let's start with the plan if you want to go through the plan and then the board. There is some flexibility in what we can do with the board in addition.
So on the five-year element of the plan on page four with respect to the airport, so that, I, this is something that George Sousa sent me, he had looked at this. So an FBO, you don't want to develop the airport into an FBO. You want to try to have an FBO come and locate at the airport. So he suggested develop and encourage an FBO and a fuel station at the airport.
What, what number are you on? I can't find.
Uh, it's under infrastructure 1E.
What page?
Page four.
Number page four, but it's not.
Airport, develop airport into an F, okay. So it would be more of a tract?
Develop, yeah, develop or, yeah, and encourage an FBO and a fuel station at the Morgan County Airport.
So I would.
That's just a fixed base operator.
So a tract and FBO with a fuel station to Morgan Airport instead of develop?
Yeah, we don't want to develop the airport into an FBO. An FBO is someone that comes in and contractually says, I'm here, I'm operating, they can provide aircraft maintenance services, they may provide the fuel services and so forth.
Okay, that one no one else got. Thank you.
Well, like I said, that was George Sousa's comment. Not going to claim it.
So I'll jump in while you're looking.
Okay.
On the one year, I think we've got quite a few changes we can make there based on things we've completed, things that we need to update. Having the Mountain Green interchange is our number one one-year plan with everything we've been given.
I think that needs to move down. Not that it can't stay on here, but I don't think it's our number-one. We don't have control over that.
I disagree. In speaking with UDOT, in fact, the last thing Chris said was that all it took was a unified council for this to move forward, and that's been part of the frustration with this, is we did have the EIS funding. In fact, it's moved forward since this because the property has been purchased. So now we're waiting for EIS funding, and until that EIS funding is in place, which is closer to two point five, it will not move up on the step. I can't, you can't apply for any of the build grant funding through the national, because it is an interstate highway therefore, and in a rural county, so it qualifies for those grants on the federal level. That's not necessarily something that an MPO like WFRC does, but those grants are available once the EIS has been completed. So the EIS is the next key in getting that done. And once that is funded, then all of the other things move along with it. But it is that EIS funding that becomes crucial for it to happen. And quite frankly, with all of the other things that have moved along, right now for economic development in the county at large, which is the responsibility of this body, that is the area that is most looked at. And until that area is developed around an interchange, Mountain Green will never be able to incorporate, because it, based on the feasibility study that was deemed unfeasible, that's the reason why. It does not have a commercial base, and it...
Well, yeah, and this area isn't included in the incorporation study.
That's what, that's right. The property owner refused to be included.
But the Transportation Commission, they haven't funded that fully.
No, the EIS?
Yeah.
I know, that's the reason why it's the number-one priority, is when we got it to that point before, it took a concerted effort from members of the Economic Development Board, supportive legislators, supportive of Weber County, supportive of Davis County, all of that is in line again. I've talked to all of Davis County again. Weber County is all supported through the RPO. The legislators are supportive. The only thing that they're waiting for on this is the support of this council. That's the reality, and I've worked on this for six years.
So I've been on here for nine and a half years. Tina Kelly was on for quite a few years before that, and I know that they worked on this. I have never, in the nine and a half years I've been here, I have never not seen the council one-hundred percent behind.
I disagree again, because Roland Haslam admitted in the last time we discussed this that he was one of the people who called Chris Peterson and told him that we didn't want it, and Ned did it before him.
Well, I don't, I don't know what Roland Haslam said.
So it has always been on paper the number-one, but it has not been the number-one as far as people working together and supporting the work done on it.
I think we're looking at it two different ways. When I say they've never been against it and they're in favor of it, and just same thing with incorporation, I've never known a council that's opposed incorporation either. It's the council is being told by UDOT and by the state, "We are not funding that. It is on the step for 2040," and so they're not wanting to waste resources and time on something that UDOT has said is not going to be funded. It's not that they're against the interchange. If Roland's against it, he can speak for himself. I'm not aware of that, but my understanding from every conversation I've had with members of the councils that I've been on, clear back from when Tina was here when I came, was that everybody was in favor of the interchange, just had not been able to get the funding.
I disagree. We had that funding, two point five million set aside by Chris Peterson for it, and then Ned called and shut that down, because they do not want to take it on. Everyone who came into the room, whether we like it or not, this is how they got me to support the rural grant where now economic development plays into whether or not it's feasible. And it, that interchange fits every single bit of the criteria by the new transportation guidelines for economic development and housing, especially with what was already done through the development agreement based on that area. With all due respect, I've worked this issue for six years. This is my district, my ward, my area, and I have worked that. I have led, I have led the UDOT tour of that area where we talked about what it took. I've gone before the Transportation Committee multiple times over this issue, traveled down to St. George to talk to him about it when it came up the last time. I know what it takes to get this done, and it is support of this council is the only thing that has been missing on it. We are welcome to bring John Barber on to talk, and to talk about that very issue, but that remains the key point, and what the last thing that Chris said before he left when he came to do the report on their study there, that was the last thing he said, was that all that was waiting was for this council to decide.
I don't remember that, but we can listen to that. That's an easy one to hear.
Yeah, pull it up and listen to it.
So I'm going to jump in here if it's okay. I don't actually see this as a priority list, the way it's written. There's sections here, yes, there's a year one and a year five, but we've got an infrastructure section, a workforce development section, a business development section, and I don't know that any one thing is necessarily higher priority. That being said, if we think it is listed in order of priority, I think we ought to change the way it's written so it has a number system instead of a lettering system. Right now, based on the discussion we were having at the very beginning of the meeting, I would actually say that high-speed internet is probably the top of the list, and then maybe the interchange, and then BNC funds, and then long-range transportation planning. If it's in an order, but I don't necessarily see this as a priority order, and maybe...
Well, this is divided into one year, items one, infrastructure.
Let's be clear then. Were you suggesting that we move from one year to five-year or down the list in one year?
I was thinking that because of the presentation we had by the other Chris.
Chestnut.
That it moved to the five-year, and that we focus more on the high-speed internet and these other issues that we're dealing with today, and that we put our efforts there.
So, Member Cannon, what would it involve in terms of our supporting this for year, in year one? Just having it in this plan or doing something in addition to that?
Well, it would first be no one calls and says, regardless of what the council voted on, we are not unified and supportive of this project when it's getting pushed through. That's the first and the foremost. But Duke has had it on its infrastructure priority list. If the Northern Utah Chamber Coalition has it as their priority, and the RPO and Weber County for the interest of Snow Basin and for the Ogden Valley has had it on their priority list, then it should stay on Morgan County's priority list for the benefit of the residents in that area. So I think it stays number one. It is the only place we have right now that the county can control any kind of economic development at all, the only place.
Well, and I don't, I mean, it's the only place that it's really zoned for, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that, and I think it's also the only place where there's much likelihood of commercial development over the next sixty minutes.
And I'm not debating that either, and I'm not saying that we should stop any of those discussions.
Well, then, as a strategic economic plan...
As the one-year priority of the interchange, the land's been purchased, that's set aside now, we can continue to work on that and whatever avenues we have, but I would like to see us focusing our attention on the things that we can actually affect change.
Well, and that's kind of what the purpose of my follow-up question was, because if alls it is is keeping it on this list and telling the state, "Yes, we're interested in having this funded, we want this to happen," that doesn't detract from my perspective from following, pursuing the high-speed internet. And I agree with you, I didn't read this as a priority list, we only work on A until we, we don't work on B until we get A done.
We've lived through a different time than you guys have.
I'm sure you have.
We know what the priorities were based on this point.
So, based on, based on the work that I've done in economic development over the last five years, this is the plan that we've worked from and the priority list that we've used since, since I've been on it. And you'll notice a lot of these things got done. But as long as it, that's why it's on there, because it speaks to what the priorities are of the county.
So why don't we, unless you want to say anything further, is there anything else that we would take off as being completed?
Yeah, there are multiple items here.
So let's focus on that for a minute, and then if you want to take a straw poll on where we keep it, my perspective is it doesn't hurt to keep it there.
Well, okay. The issue is this. Interchange is not the make or break of Morgan County. Okay, we have a difference of opinion, all right? Chris Chestnut already told us, they do not even think about an EIS study until a project is within five years of even being on their radar. They've told us multiple times, it's not on their radar till 2030, all right? The other deal is...
That's not what he said.
If you want to take all the letters away and just put dash marks, I would say yes, but to sit here and say that Mountain Green Interchange is our number-one priority is absurd.
Well, first of all, it doesn't even say number one. Number one relates to infrastructure, so infrastructure in our first year.
Okay, but Member Cannon keeps referencing it, oh, sorry. Sorry for interrupting you.
So A, B, C, D, I don't, I don't care if we move A down to E, it doesn't matter to me. That part doesn't, because again, I agree with Member Newton, this isn't a stated list in terms of our preference, and if we, I mean, first of all, I would change all of the lettering, because I don't do AA. You know, we should just do it, and if you want to do it with bullet points, that doesn't matter either. With respect to the legislature and/or UDOT and what's on its radar, that changes a lot depending on what we do and say, what lobbyists do and say, what other jurisdictions and counties say. So from my perspective, if you want to see it continually bumped from the radar and put further and further out, you don't express it as a priority as a council.
Yeah.
So I don't, that's why I'm, I don't know if it will come in 2030 or 2027. I have no idea what the priority would be. But if we don't express it as a priority and something that would be critical to the economic development that we would like to see happen, and I'm assuming we want some to happen in making that statement, and focusing it in that Mountain Green Town Center area, I think we should state it as a one-year priority. Will that move the needle enough for them to do it in 2027? I don't know.
No, it, but it doesn't hurt, and it takes work.
So why don't, why don't we do these with bullet points?
So we're...
You know, the other thing perhaps we ought to consider is that we've gotten here, our action is to have an environmental impact study funded. If we don't feel like that's going to be funded within the year, maybe we change that to say, you know, I don't know, write a letter to the, to our representatives requesting this be funded, or something like that, I don't know.
So I think that you'd need the funding, full funding of environmental impact study to stay on there, but you could do, whether it's one or, whether it's A, I didn't do these, this is Steve's, but it would be working with WFRC, working with Transportation Commission, working with a coalition of partners, WEATSK, Utah was on board. That coalition of partners, I'm happy to list as who the partners were that were all in support. And the RPO, that's, that's the main reason that Weber was interested, because they have a vested interest in the access to the Ogden Valley through this as well.
Well, yeah, what I was trying to get at, and I think this is what you were saying as well, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we need to talk about the things that we have control over. If we don't have control over those funds, we can't necessarily make the funding happen, but I, and it's fine to leave it on there, but I think maybe we need to be more specific and say, "We want to get this group together and send letters of support, you know, to the state legislature requesting that the impact, the EIS be funded," or something like that.
Yeah, pursue funding of economic, environmental impact study.
Yeah, there you go. Just specific enough that it's something that we're actually doing, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, that does.
And honestly, I think we need to do that on several of these, the more I look at it.
Yeah, Mike, you had asked about the broadband internet. If you go to the five-year F, that was, that was what we were talking about, moving to replace into the one-year broadband internet speed, high-speed internet, increased providers for business and residents, that, the work with internet providers for development of county-wide broadband service is really that five-year moves to the one-year.
It's already in there.
It's already there on D, under infrastructure.
Yeah, it's there, but...
Is that the same thing, or is it different?
No, it's a little, high-speed internet to all Morgan County, work with UDOT for expedited approval, we have that approval.
So that's the change.
And the right-of-way is done, and the Croydon... The Croydon to Morgan is done, it's, it's only pulling the fiber, so what we would be doing is moving that five-year priority F in to replace the items under broadband high-speed internet.
How much did Utopia get pulled through that, for that?
Utopia didn't do any of it.
They didn't always did it all, so, and...
Utopia's running off the existing fiber that was already here.
Okay.
Are there any other things that should come off because of completion in the year one?
Yeah, so...
And is that, I mean, is that something that you're just going to work with this group and committee on and come back with?
So they'd come back on it, but I do need the input on, from you.
See, A, we do have an RPO already.
Yeah, so the RPO is, is completed.
That's set up with Julie from Deputy Percy.
And just FYI, Los Angeles Regional Council's funding of Julie is running out, and if we want to continue that, the county and Weber County will have to pick up that funding. So that's something that those of you that are coming back are going to have to address.
Do we know how much we're talking?
Yeah, that was always part of the, the plan on it as it graduates, and Weber County pays the same amount or more on it. Do you remember what it was, Darryl?
No.
Because we had, it's a graduated, they were, WFRC paid for it the first two, and then it went...
We haven't started paying yet, but that's...
Yes, we have.
We have?
Uh-huh. Yeah, they sent the invoice for this year.
Oh, we did get an invoice this year, we did. I do remember that now.
You just, we just barely paid it a couple of weeks ago.
So that's something we can talk about, not right now, but...
Okay. So, given the time, what I'm going to suggest is that if you have additional comments in terms of things that have been completed or should be added or so forth, send them to Member Cannon, and then you'll come back with a black-lined list so that we can review it, and then I guess we should bring it up, is this something that we should vote on?
Yes, we have to approve it.
You have this on your agenda tonight, but it may be too soon.
Yeah, I think we're, yeah, we'll move it and do it in two weeks, but in order to get the funding, we have to move forward on it, so it needs to be an open discussion.
With respect to the committee, it's formed loosely, but if we need to formalize that in some way, then can you come back with a recommendation as to the committee?
Yeah, so the...
And again, I would invite anybody to send recommendations of people, if we need just a Morgan County citizen.
We just need to know tonight, for the, what I would leave on there is that we discuss and name, not the named people, although when you go to, like, workforce services, that's always Eden Johnson, that's who serves on MEDP now, that's our representative in this area. When you, when you talk about the BRC, that's Andrew Willis. There are people, when you name those organizations, that are automatically servicing Morgan County, so they go on. It is, membership of the council can stay the same, but it needs to be led by someone other than the council at MEDP, so then it's the chamber or a member of the community. Those, those five that are mandated by the state are set. It's whether or not we want to make it seven and add two more members of the community to continue to have the school district have a voice on there the way they've had, and addressing those that have traditionally been on MEDP. So we're close in the structure now, it's just been led by a member of the council instead of a member of the community.
So you want to discuss that as part of your item?
Yeah, because we do need to name this, who's on it in the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else on this item? Okay, Member Ballantyne, you're not on the agenda, but you sent me a text.
Yeah, I need to talk about an exit strategy. So as it turns out, we have an offer on our house. We've been planning to, well, the plan has always been to build in the neighborhood we live in currently, and the plan was to rent a house just across the street from us, from the Rhodes, Teresa Rhodes. Monica had set up a timeline for us to sell the house, and it just sold quicker than we thought. The Rhodes rental is not available till September, October, maybe, so that puts us in a little bit of jeopardy as far as residing in my district. Our former government state said I must reside in the district where I vacate the seat. The rental we did find is a street over from my district. That wasn't planned by Monica or anybody else, that's just where we found it, and rentals in my district are a few, so...
Let's just change the district boundary, that's pretty simple.
We just move it a street?
It's elegant. Let's just change the district boundary. That's pretty simple. We just move it a street. It's elegant.
We just, it's just a little bubble over there. We can't do that.
It is, it's, it's right by the park, actually.
A temporary bubble.
I mean, I, I could walk over to the park and be in my district in about 50 feet. So it's just kind of a weird place.
So the question is, do you want to stay on until the end of the year?
Well, I, I would love to stay on until the end of the year.
Then suspend the rules and it's all done.
But I don't, I don't want to, but I'm trying to be transparent to where we are in the process and what the boundaries say. Yeah, I'd just rather be transparent, but I would like to stay on and complete the stir.
I would recommend that on our next meeting, we do an agenda item to suspend the rules and let him stay in here unless Jan tells me that's impossible. I think it's impossible. As much as I love Darryl, I can state, it's our form of government document. It's a rule. So there's certain things you have to go through to amend. It's usually amended in a form of government document.
Would you be amending the form of government or amending the district?
No.
Can you amend the district?
If you choose to do something with the district, and that's your business, but the form of government document says the minute you don't reside in your district, the seat is vacated.
Boy, if I'd only known this a little hour ago.
Why do we provide such easy exits?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Alls you got to do is say.
Well, they know that they thought people would want to do this. Of course, that form of government's only good for another six months.
That's right.
But it is still our governing document to a switch over. So if you do something-
I personally think it might be easier to amend the districts because we can, that is under the purview of the council to amend the district and you'd make a bubble that was your new, your rental address.
But if, but if you suspend a rule, you're not, you're not changing or taking away?
And that's the form of government. It's like the constitution. I mean, our county constitution, that's the thing. So you don't suspend those rules. I have no, I mean, if you decide to redistrict, you're good. I mean, this is your, it's your constitution. I got it on card stock. I mean, we usually print it for people on card stock. It's, it's your constitution for Morgan County. And I would suggest you don't. There's rules you have to go through to even pick any amendment.
Let's, let's look into modifying the district boundary.
If you do that, then you don't have to modify the constitution or, you know, I don't know.
I like this.
Those rules are, but they'd be much simpler.
Do those districts exist anymore since we did already redistrict?
They do based on the school board. But they don't affect any of the elections going on currently that I'm aware of.
Yeah, the new council seat, the new commission seats, they're all.
They're all, the new districts.
They're all new districts.
The only thing I could think of is there is one, I don't know how many, but I know that the, your representative on the school board is up for reelection there. If you were to change that district, you'd need to check and make sure it didn't affect who's voting.
I think we just make a bubble around the new address. That's all you're doing is adding this particular address is in this district.
Yeah, you'd have to move just a street over.
Not, well, we wouldn't move more than just, no, we'd just move the one address. That's it.
So none of your neighbors would be affected?
Yeah, no one else would be impacted at all. You would just bring in, unless the current resident is a voter.
So I don't know what that entails. I don't know where your rental is, where you're looking at.
It's, it's in a townhouse, just, just on 250, 258.
Oh, is there of your neighbor?
Talking about the old Johansson apartments?
No, he's talking, the newer ones that-
Those Tucker Jensen's?
Tucker Jensen's.
Oh, the ones that Tucker put in there for?
I'm not sure.
Alongside the park?
Yeah, right there.
They kind of face that way.
Face Ridley's?
Yeah.
Well, let's look into doing that. We can do that.
So you'd have to advertise that as a-
I think that's the simplest solution. Otherwise, we have to point some-
And trying to point somebody for six months is not-
And try and bring them up to speed before they get off.
Yeah, you'd be going with an even number. There's no way you'd be able to replace.
Okay. Anything else for purposes of the work session?
I'm going to say we'll change districts. Said that twice everywhere.
Maybe take him part of your district, Mike.
Do you want to just report on the election? Okay.
Sorry, forgot to give you one.
Hi, so this topic there was answered here. That's it. Does anybody have questions? About what we're doing? We won't release any more results until Thursday. We released our original results last week before the Fourth of July holiday. We counted everything that we had on election day. The post office was really good and they collected all of the mail carrier routes, mail, and everything that was delivered to the post office and hand-postmarked it and delivered to us on election day, rather than rerouting it to Salt Lake to go through the original process. So everything that was received on election day was processed and counted and those results were posted. When we came back from the holiday, we counted everything that came in the mail and reposted results on the first of, first of July. So we have 14 unresolved ballots out there right now that are either missing signatures, that the signatures didn't match the signature that we have on file.
How many? 14?
14. Because we counted everything that came in the post office that was delivered from Morgan, you highly doubt that we will have anything coming in the mail between now and when we canvass, which is scheduled for the next council meeting. So we will close our election on July 21st.
What's an overvote and an undervote?
An overvote is when a voter, we most likely saw it during like the governor's race when there was more than two, two candidates and you could only vote for one, they would cast more than one vote. So it said, choose one, and they chose more than one. That's an overvote. This is a good example on a close race that we had where they actually marched and voted for a candidate and then crossed it out and voted for another one. The machine recognizes it as two votes on one and it kicks it out and it says, there's an overvote on this race and you need to adjudicate it. You need to tell us what you think the voter actually voted on this one. So if you want to pass this around as an example, that counted as an overvote. And it kicked it out and we had to adjudicate this vote and decide what was the voter's intent on this one. An undervote is when they don't cast a vote at all in that particular race. We actually saw a lot of undervotes where the voters in the county cast votes for the big races like the governor or the congressional race, but didn't cast any votes in the local races. So the local races had a lot of undervotes because the votes were cast in the, in the governor's race, but they didn't cast any votes in the local races.
So they didn't vote in the local?
Correct.
Okay.
So the overvotes have actually been reconciled. They kicked them all out and we had to go in and adjudicate them. That was one of them in the post race. But it still shows, just so you know, the machine recognized that in this race, there were three overvotes that we had to go in and reconcile.
I mean, that back when you get done.
And it kicked out all three of them. It kicked out all of them on all of the races. And we had to reconcile them, but it would still show that there were three.
So that, but they're counted in here now?
They are counted in there.
Two votes. It's a close race.
So we will release results again on Thursday. We have had a couple that have come in now that are postmarked the day of the election that we've been able to count. We originally had 22 ballots that needed resolution that have come in and we're now down to 14. So we do have some. The reason why we're waiting until Thursday is should one of those ballots be in this close race that is counted and you knew that it was Tina's ballot, for example, that is being counted and it was the one ballot in that one race, you would know exactly how Tina counted. So we no longer protect the secrecy of that voter's ballot. So we're waiting until we have a handful to count and release, instead of result, releasing one result a day, we're waiting until Thursday. So we will-
I'm not in that race. No.
Until, until this Thursday?
This Thursday. Some of the bigger counties are releasing daily at three. We're releasing this Thursday at three and then we'll release again when the county canvass is on the 21st. I doubt that our, our results will change from Thursday to the 21st. And the chance that there's a recount. Candidates cannot request a recount until after you have canvassed the results on the 21st. The candidate has to request the recount. We don't allow them to do it. And they can't request it unless they are 0.25 percent difference between.
Is it 0.25 or less?
0.25 or less, sorry. In this particular race, that's 2.7 ballots.
Of course it is.
So if it stays as is, they could, but if it doesn't, if it changes, if it's three or more votes, it's.
Yeah, and just for another piece of information, the candidate has to make the request. They have seven days after you canvass to make that request. They make the request and they pay for the, they pay for the recount.
So the nine vote difference is why? What did I miss?
Um, there's not a nine vote.
Nine vote, which one?
Well, you got total 1,123 by mail. Also, what's, okay, so I guess that's my question. You got election day, nine.
By mail was the actual day that we, that was election day. But, excuse me, by mail was actual election day.
Okay.
And then election day, I don't know why the report was written that way. Election day was the day we came back after the Fourth of July holiday, counted what came in the mail afterwards. There was a difference of nine ballots in that particular race that we counted from election day.
So election day was 1114?
Correct. And then we counted nine more ballots.
Okay. Okay.
Did I answer all your questions?
Yep. Okay. Let's go ahead and begin our regular meeting. It's Tuesday, July 7th, 2020, Morgan County Council. All members are present, either here in the building or by telephone.
Is she still here?
Sarah, are you still on the phone?
Sure am.
Okay.
Thank you. We need a light or something. We'll begin with a prayer and pledge. Member Haslam, can I ask you to do that?
Our Conde de Son, Heavenly Father, we come before thee this day to thank thee for our many blessings. We are grateful for the opportunity which we have to live in this beautiful valley. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve and for the residents of this community. Be with us this night. Help us to be mindful of the needs of all those around us. Protect us. We pray humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for being here. We will go ahead. Is there any changes to the agenda? Okay. And there are no minutes for approval.
Well, Tola, what about Tina's economic?
So we still have one, we have one section on that that's still there. So that item needs to stay, but we need to do the economic advisory board needs to change.
So the county council review and update of the Morgan economic plan will come?
Right. But I think it's-
The rest of it is on then?
But, yeah, we do still need to do the partnership board or the economic, rural economic development. Yeah. Morgan Economic Development Board.
Your second.
Yeah. But I'm curious, Mike, do we need to have them go back into a work session to discuss CARES funding at the end of the meeting?
It wouldn't hurt to have just a brief discussion on it. Unlike, well, or we can do it at the beginning of the next meeting when we have more information. It's up to you.
Yeah, maybe it's just an update to everybody where, where it's going and what, what it's looking like.
Okay.
Anyone who has, is watching this, who is a business owner in the county and who is not aware there is grant funding available through the CARES Act, that application is available for anyone who has not seen it. I believe it's on the website. It is available through the chamber. It's available through me or Mike if you email us directly. So we want to make sure everybody knows about that.
Okay, declaration of conflicts of interest.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda with those two adjustments, the minutes and the county council review and update.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Declaration of conflicts of interest. Okay. That puts us into our public comment period. For those of you who are here to speak to the council but not on a specific agenda item with respect to which we'll be having a public hearing, you have the opportunity to speak now. Okay, no public comment. So let's move to our first agenda item. This is Lance Evans, continuation of a public hearing from the Planning Commission on June 25th, 2020. Discussion, public hearing and decision, West Old Highway Road Future Land Use Map Amendment. A proposed amendment to the future land use map of approximately 22 acres, making up multiple properties, going from the rural residential and natural resources land use designation to the rural residential land use designation, located along the north side of a portion of West Old Highway Road in Stoddard. And this is related to the next item on our agenda as well. Mr. Evans?
I'm handing out something actually for the third item on this agenda. Good evening, council members. This is a future land use map amendment request and a rezon request. There are two separate applications. There are two separate motions required, one on each, because there are two separate things. That's the, what's being handed out is probably the number three. Sorry, I may overlook myself.
I think you get those.
Should be one more.
Did you keep one? No, I think those are yours.
No, they're two different.
There's two different ones.
There's more here.
Okay.
Thanks. Sorry, Mr. Evans. You guys usually have a little break between the meetings. Anyway, so this is the first item, the future land use map amendment. The area is in question is off of, or north of I-4 and north of Old Highway Road, across from Stoddard and as part of Stoddard. This is a Hidden Hills development here. And I'm not sure exactly when, but back in the day when the town zoning came into Morgan County and the areas along with frontage on arterial roadways were placed. There are several of these, this area got this zoning. So the RR1 zoning is along the front of these smaller parcels. A property owner came in and said, I'd like to do a shop on the back half of my parcel. The front third of most of these lots that are in question tonight are zone RR1, but the back half of them is zone MU160 and is natural resources and recreation of future land use map. So we have mostly, the acreages are one to two acres. There's actually some that are smaller than one acre, there's half acre lots, and then there is one 10 acre part. But mostly small lots that have this dual zoning. And in order to correct that, we were talking about this applicant or this property owner coming in and doing a rezon on that one parcel. And as we discussed that, we said, this is something that the county ought to, probably ought to fix anyway. These lots are all have the two lot zoning. They can't do too much with the back half of their properties if they wanted to. And it's just a little odd to have these small lots with two, two zones on them. Especially when you consider that the second half is an MU160 with 160 acre minimum lot size, 60 foot setbacks. I mean, it just really prohibits these property owners.
Is that, is that what prohibited the, the construction of the accessory dwelling?
Correct.
The setback requirements? Sorry, accessory building. It was the setback requirements?
So you can't have a detached garage or shop because it's, you know, he's got 60 foot setbacks.
Lots smaller than the zoning designations.
No, no, it's 150 feet. You could put a little 20 building in.
Okay.
But really, no, no problem. And so we're just trying to look at that. And if we're going to do it on one, we kind of said, well, is there an area that, you know, should we address more than that? And so we talked to the planning commission, got their direction to go ahead and pursue rezoning these smaller lots. And then we looked and also we have these lots here that just have small portions that- And then we looked and also we have these lots here that just have small portions that are, um, in the MU one sixty. There is the one larger parcel that's ten acres. Uh, the canal goes about, cuts halfway through it, above the canal is very steep. Lull that is not, I think with the current zoning as they are now, but we estimate that they could maybe get three lots. Maybe, uh, if they put a road in and did a bunch of stuff, they might be able to get four with the current zoning. You, with this future land use map amendment and change, they'd be in about the same situation. Cause they, when we take out the twenty-five percent slope, they really aren't gonna get, it's not like we're granting them and giving them a bunch more development rights. So, um, that's all, we're just trying to clean up the zoning and make it look a little more reflect what's actually there and what's constructed. These are all single family homes on small lots, they're not large recreational or natural resources parcels. So let's have the zoning reflect what's actually there. And so it's the two part of doing a future land use amendment to change that map and then the rezone.
Remind me what the development code says about split zoning, does it?
We allow for lots to be in two zones. The zone that the access and frontage is established on becomes the, uh, zone that has to be met. So it's RR one, it has to have at least one acre in RR one, has to have two hundred feet of frontage, and the access point has to come from there, from that, uh, area. The back half with the, we've got this in a lot of places throughout the county, but it's usually A twenty on the back half, so it's not as restricted as MU one sixty. So that's why this is a little more unique than all the dual zoning we have.
Okay.
Lance, in regards to that, um, at one time we allowed, if, if they developed or they got their established, as we're restricting of, their right to build on the RR one and they hadn't met all those things, we allowed them to build back in the A twenty or the MU one sixty. Why does that not apply here?
That would apply here, but then they'd have to meet the MU one sixty setbacks.
So they, even though we, we granted that, they still have to meet?
They'd still have to meet the standard.
I apologize, cause I was under the impression that they met the RR one things, but they do still have to meet the A twenty or the MU one sixty.
Depending on where they put the build.
I'm saying if they put it back in the other zone, that's.
Then they have to meet the setbacks for the zone that they're in.
Okay.
So.
What's the, what's the code on that?
On which?
Yeah, that one, that multi-use.
Lots in two zones, um. I'll have to look that up. A five. B. Ah, I gotta look.
Can't believe you didn't tell us.
I knew it earlier than that.
That's the way my brain works too. I know a lot more early in the day than I do.
So you're saying we should start doing these in the morning?
Yeah, for me, but maybe not for everybody else.
Depends on how early.
And this came with the, the recommendation of the planning commission. I watched them deliberate over this.
They have reviewed it, had a, had a meeting and had recommended approval.
If you, if you watch on YouTube, you can notify, you get a notice that you're the only viewer.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Somebody, or people in the audience, I assume, but viewing on YouTube, it's like, there's one person viewing this video.
And I watched your last council meeting, I think that was for forty-three or forty-eight.
Can you?
Do you want me to pull it up?
Yeah, if you will.
It's just one paragraph, but it's.
Yeah, I know, it's. It's all in the wording.
I could hear people in the audience.
Let me feed out a tangent of the internet here somewhere.
So he's pulling that up, are there any other questions for the staff with respect to this?
So I have a question, the homeowner, he didn't ask for the change, he just, the gentleman that asked, the ones put a structure, did he ask for this change or just some?
We were discussing development options and how you could go forward, I said you would have to go and actually do the rezone in the future land use map. If we wanted to do that.
It's eight dash five dash six.
And then we looked at the area and said, you know, maybe this is something that the planning commission would say, hey, let's, um, kind of correct this non-conforming situation that we have in this area. And when we discussed it with the planning commission, they said, yes, let's pay in cash you the rezone. Um, so this is lots in two or more, uh, zone more districts, uh.
Oh, yeah, go back, make it big.
There you go. So if a lot permitting residential uses is located within the boundaries of two or more zoning districts, then the dwelling structure may be located anywhere on such lot. Minimum areas and frontage required by this title shall be applied based on the zoning district in which the frontage is established and located. Uh, the examples are on two hundred feet. Yard and setback and coverage requirements shall be administered based on the zoning district in which the structure is located. So when that accessory building goes back to the MU one sixty, we apply the MU one sixty standards. And on a one and a half or two acre lot that's somewhat rectangular, you could make that, they can't put an accessory building. So. Didn't seem like it was. It seemed punitive to the person that, you know, really, if there were another area, if that whole lot was on RR one, we would allow it. Why the, why is one acre of the lot is on MU one sixty?
So are there any other questions for staff? Okay, I'll take the, you do?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so do we have letters from all of these people that we are affecting their lots?
We sent letters to everybody, I took several phone calls, we sent the initial letter saying we're considering doing this, uh, and asked for them to contact us or give us any feedback. Um, and then they also got notice of the rezone, uh, public meeting for the planning commission, of course, subsequently this meeting. We heard back from, um, maybe four people. And they all said, well, you know, what's this really about? And, and we wanted to make it clear and explain what was going on. And, but once we talked to these people, they all kind of, oh, okay. I mean, it's not changing, it doesn't change anything except for really allowing them to have this accessory building and that.
Okay, so the, so the answer as far as having letters from these twenty-three lots that it's going to affect?
We sent letters, two letters to each of them.
But we don't have anything in writing that says they agree with it.
That is correct.
Okay.
Or disagree.
Or disagree.
Correct.
The planning commission is only, the zoning ordinance allows for the planning commission or the county council to initiate a rezone request. We followed that process and proceeded through. And we even actually, the second, the first letter, we kind of went above that and said, anybody got any issue with this? We cleared from that and then initiated the planning commission.
So why are we just addressing this on a one by one basis? And the reason I'm asking is, when, when did, when did the county get into the business of just going and rezoning property?
Well, you've always had the authority to do that, and it's part of just good planning that, to have the rules consistent and, and to have fewer non-conformities. Every, you know, all five acre lots meet this standard, all five acre lots meet that standard. We've allowed for lots in two zones, and it hasn't been too much of an issue. In this case, it seems unnecessarily punitive and, and really what, what was the county benefiting by keeping this small area out of, you know, making the whole parcels conform? So.
Well, so.
And they were mad, but it's, it was, if we're gonna rezone one of them, we might as well address this whole issue and, and, you know, kind of clean it up, so to speak.
Well, but that, that's my question, I mean, I wouldn't have as much issue with it if it was, uh, you know, the individual coming in requesting his lot, but for the county to take on, to take on the role of just going in and rezoning, we have people come in all the time, uh, and request rezones on, on their property. Um, but, but they're the ones that are initiating it. Um, you know, what about the, you know, you got property that extends down through Stoddard farther? You know, are we gonna automatically, when they subdivide, we automatically change in all of their zoning to RR one? I mean, to me, we're opening, to just go and for the county to blanket coverage and rezone all of these lots? We're opening a can of worms that we are not ready to deal with, in my opinion. Okay? I would be more satisfied with each individual coming in and saying, hey, you know what, I want to rezone mine so I can do this. Then we can look at it on a personal deal, and I wouldn't have as much issue with that as I do right now. Right at the moment, I'm not excited about just taking and rezoning everybody's property up along there.
Sure.
Okay. I will comment that we have in the past done some, um, rezonings initiated by the county. I mean, we did that with the town center zoning in Mountain Green, we initiated that. So there is some precedence just for doing that, I'm not arguing for or against. It's a precedent. Yeah. It started by a jurisdiction saying, we're gonna zone everybody's property. Prior to that, they were allowed to do what they wanted with it, so.
Well, but, but the difference is the Mountain Green is the town center, and all of that has been part of the discussion.
But for a long time, there was, well, I'm interested in the public hearing, but, but for a long time, there was actually legal precedent that would not allow you to do this on a one-on-one basis, it was spot zoning. And so you would just handle every one of these things as a spot zone change. Whereas this, from my perspective, I, I mean, I listened to the planning commission's discussion on it, I think they did a good job in evaluating it and considering the various issues. And I don't, I think it's sloppy for the county to have split zones, uh, you know, over these parcels and cleaning it up to take it back to the parcel boundary. Now that begs the question, what came first, the zoning or the parcel designation? I, I understand that, but this is, this is from my perspective with, obviously within the legislative discretion to move forward, to rezone the property, and it's a reasonable use or exercise of the legislative discretion because it's cleaning up an issue. I, I mean, and the other thing, if we were downzoning their property, then I would be more concerned about it. So if we were saying, we're gonna take this RR one and we're gonna rezone everybody to MU one sixty so that they're now pre-existing non-conforming uses, I'd feel very differently about this. This is technically an upzone, it gives them more flexibility with respect to the use of their land. And so I don't have, I don't have that, your concern.
So this ordinance was created because people were subdividing. They didn't want to go through the zone change process because they had enough for RR one, but people didn't want to build up next to the road. They wanted to get back off of the road. So this was created to accommodate those people who didn't go through the zone change process, even though that was.
When you say this, are you referring to that section we just read?
That ordinance.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize he changed it.
No, that ordinance.
That ordinance. And so we created that to allow people to better use their property without affecting the zoning because a lot of the conflict was coming from people saying, well, I want to subdivide my property, and in order to control the density, they wanted to keep the zoning the same. But then as people were purchasing the lots, they're saying, but we're fine with all that, we just want to build back in this back area back here. We don't want to build up by the road. And it was a, a situation up in Porterville that spurred the whole development of this. So we created that ordinance, we allowed that to happen. Of course, our first fear was that somebody would come in later and say, well, we don't want to live clear back here, we want to build up front and sell this house. And that very situation happened on that very lot that was the one that caused all this. And so my issue is if we start going around and doing this, we're now opening that door back up to where people can say, well, it's all in RR one, why can't I go ahead and have my flag lot now? And I know you're in favor of flag lots, but that's.
But that got denied, so we don't allow them.
We don't. But if, you know, now it's opening that up to where, now possibly they have, for example, this lot one four nine, sorry, I'm losing my eyesight, nine zero, nine six, anyway. That's a considerably larger plot of land, they potentially might be opening up to multiple lots now where they wouldn't have those multiple lots before.
Right, that, I, I'm not gonna dispute that this could potentially allow additional, some additional lots in that area. That, that's a possibility.
And this is just here, if we start doing this around the county, what are we opening up around the county? Cause we don't know what we're doing, how it's affecting other areas if we start saying this is how we're gonna deal with this issue. That's my concern.
But we have very few issues in this county or areas in the county where we have split zoning, is that correct?
No, because of the tunnel zoning, we have a lot of this.
We have a lot of it.
Typically, it's not MU one sixty.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It's typically A twenty.
Right.
So this, this requires a public hearing, should we have a motion, listen to the public comment? Okay, motion?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item? Okay.
I have a question, this has been in this zone for quite a while.
So can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Chris Lowenstein.
Okay.
I work for the property owners that are wanting this. Um, we bought this home over a year and a half ago, and we're fine with the home and stuff, but if you're, there's three homes that have been granted permission that have been there longer than my home, or no, not longer than our home, but they're in that MU one sixty, so who gave them the right to build that? Not even a year ago, there was a shop that was built there, and it runs right through this property, right here, actually, right here. So it's built back here, how was he given that right? And now here we are trying to get it corrected, and you're against it because of open account warrants?
Well, I'm not necessarily against, I'm assuming you're the individuals that asked for the shop.
Well, what's funny is last year, we did the same thing, and they said, oh, you're in the A one, whatever, A one twenty. So we go back this year, and now we're in the MU one sixty, okay, so who's doing it, it's all for best.
And as far as that guy getting one?
There's homes.
Did he or did he not even get a building?
There's homes, there's shops.
There's two homes that are built there. My neighbor is back up, Brandon Peterson, nobody could have built his home on a MU one sixty.
So there's.
Here's the chair.
There was multiple ways that you could do that, board of adjustments, is that what they're called?
Well, and, and under, under your code provision before, if they're, if it's the residents and the frontage, they get to use the, the zoning from the frontage, right?
If they build in the back half, if they build in the MU one sixty, they have to meet the MU one sixty setbacks.
Okay. We don't know the answer to that question, but do you have other comments?
No, I don't, that was just my question, he does.
I'm at Lowenstein.
Okay.
With this said, addressing Roland and Mr. Haslam. By granting it just to one, each person coming in and planning separately, the cost, I can't remember what exactly it was, by the time I get this figured out, it was what, eighteen hundred dollars?
At least a thousand just for.
Yeah, on my line. That's penalizing us for somebody coming in and zoning it wrong in the first place. Cause if I remember right, this upper property line's been here for a long time, this was Gail's property. Why wouldn't this zoning have went to that property line when they come in with that tunnel zoning and went to the property line versus just cutting our property right in half? All of us, not just me, of course. And like she says, I mean, there's shops, there's homes in these areas. If they have to meet them setbacks, how are they doing it? It don't, what I want is not to be forced just to do what I want without saying nothing. You know what I mean? I've, I've done it the right way, I've come, I'm, I'm planning the zone, trying to get building permit or whatever it is, land use, whatever, I need to do this. But there's no, if, if it can't be fixed, what do I do? I can't use my land? That ain't right. You know, I mean, it's not like anybody, I know that in most of this, the grade's steep enough, you couldn't build back there. I mean, I think I'm, well, there's a couple of us that had to grub out the mountain for that space. But as far as building homes, I don't think it's, I don't know about the other homes up above, but for down below us. but for down below us, but for us, it's not a possibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else wanna speak to this issue?
I can just say...
Is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, further discussion?
So as far as why the zoning wasn't changed, it's probably similar to what I was just suggesting earlier with the situation in Porterville, where they didn't wanna go through the process of zoning change because they didn't need it over to get their lots and their subdivisions. Again, it's nothing but surmising because at this point, it's just a guess what happened whenever that was done. I don't know when that was subdivided, probably long before I ever lived in the county, so...
Some of the parcels, I don't have that date. Some of the parcels have been since the tunnel zoning went in, but certainly some of them existed before as well.
Well, and that was a legislative approach adopted by the county council at that time. That's what they decided to do. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm pretty clear on, I try to be clear on most things. I don't like the tunnel zoning. I frankly don't have an opposition to flag lots. And I don't, I don't mind cleaning up this kind of an issue and having lots have entire zoning, and I recognize that that may result in some minor increase in the density in this overall area, kind of consistent with the amount of votes necessary for a recall. I mean, we might, we might get three to 12 more lots, you know? And to me, that's not a problem. But that's my personal view with respect to it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve the West Old Highway Road rezone map amendment, application number 20.028, changing the zoning district from MU160 to RR1 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated July 7, 2020.
Second.
Really quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Future land use map. I read the wrong one.
Semantics, but...
I'm going to amend my motion to change it to future land use map.
Second, stands.
Was that the right application number?
Thank you. I was looking at the wrong one.
So there's a motion for approval by Member Newton that has been seconded by Member Cannon. Are there any questions on the motion? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Sarah, can you tell me, did you vote in favor?
I did.
Okay, so that motion carries. All right, let's move on to the second half of this. Lance Evans, continuation of a public hearing from the Planning Commission on June 5, 2020, discussion, public hearing and decision, West Old Highway Road rezone. A proposed amendment to the zoning map of approximately 22 acres, making up multiple properties going from RR1 and MU160 to RR1 zoning district, located in the Stoddard area along West Old Highway Road, north of, north 600 west and south of West 2,000 north, Morgan, Utah. Mr. Evans.
I found it is both, discussed both his applications with my original presentation. Any additional questions? First half.
Mr. Chair, I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue as part of the public hearing on the rezone?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the West Old Highway Road rezone map amendment, application number 20.028, changing the zoning district from MU160 to RR1 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated July 7, 2020.
Second.
Motion for approval by Member Newton, second by Member Cannon. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries as well. Thank you, Sarah. I heard your vote that time.
And I just wanna be clear that if this was an individual application, I would support this. I just don't support doing the areas just because now we're gonna have everybody come in and say, Lance, will you do this area for me? So that, I know people right now that will jump on this as soon as they hear about it. But if I were an individual application for the reason that they wanted, I would have no issue with that whatsoever.
I think you expressed a similar sentiment.
Your vote was in favor, oh, on this one as well. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, next item, Lance Evans, discussion, public hearing and decision, continuation of November 19, 2019 hearing. CW Land Company requests approval of the basin development agreement for a mixed-use residential subdivision for 244 dwelling units and 35% commercial area and the town center area of Mountain Green.
All right, this item is a development agreement request for, as you said, a mixed-use development in the Mountain Green Town Center area. The property is located as Trapper's Loot Road, I mean, Old Highway Road. Trapper's Loot is to the west of the project. The Mountain Green Middle School is above, and we did a subdivision flat and platted 5,000 west through the middle of the property last year, creating two large parcels, and that's how it sits today. This development agreement is the first step in the development process for this project. Initially, last year, they were talking about 269 units through Planning Commission and County Council discussions. There was a co-amendment proposed that was in process while this was going on and was amended to change the town center requirement to allow mixed use, but it had to have 35% of the project designated as commercial. The initial plan that was in this development agreement last year did not have that. The applicant asked for it to be postponed, and they have subsequently revised their application. It's similar, but they reduced the number of dwelling units to 244. They have created 18.3 acres of commercial designation on the project. They'll have multifamily to the, on the western side, next to, adjacent to Trapper's Loot Road. Single-family homes on smaller lots, roughly 8,000 square feet in the center of the project. And then along the edge, on the west eastern edge, adjacent to Rollins Ranch, they have both an open space area with trail connections and then larger lots that are very similar in size to the Rollins Ranch, neighbors to the east. So they kinda have a transition from large to medium to higher density. Let's see, the revisions that staff read through and has worked, been working with the developer on the language in the development agreement. We got some comments today that I passed out earlier for the county engineer. They had some concerns about exactly what the language meant and some areas that we could maybe tighten it up so that it was a little bit clearer. I talked to the applicant about these, and they are okay with them. I think, I think we're both on the same page. They wanna just be able to ensure that they're able to do their development, to have basings, to not be held up by moratoriums unnecessarily. And if there's a good reason, they understand that can happen. But, you know, and just to establish exactly what they are able to do so that those entitlements with this development agreement are there. Then they will go through the subdivision process of doing a concept plan, preliminary plat, and final plat to ensure that the roads and all the other standards are met. During that process, they will also have to do design standards and to meet the town center zoning district and their design standards. They also included in the development agreement a small portion of, just a little small indicator of the type of homes and the footprints that they would have, were single-family homes and townhomes. And that's all included in the development agreement. The comments today that I handed out to you are, you know, just kind of some smaller corrections of verbiage and language and clarification. A significant one is in Section 3A under governing standards and guidelines that generally, at the very end of that, it says that the application shall be allowed to do a phase-by-phase process. And just to make sure everybody's on the same page, we added in the lineup that that phase-by-phase would go through the county subdivision process. So it's not that they're just gonna go do what they want. They're gonna go through the county subdivision ordinance and those tools would apply, but they can't apply for that. And so that, that comment's added in a couple of places. The other, the other significant change would be in item number five, vested rights and reserved legislative powers, be applicable development regulations. Staff is recommending and the applicant has said that it would be okay if we took out the language addressing how they would be impacted by a moratorium. Moratorium would, it was, there was some concern that, with this language in there, there was some concern that it might be confusing if the county had to initiate a moratorium for something. The county, in doing a moratorium, has to meet a very high standard anyway. So that would apply to this development one way or the other. And so both applicant and staff, they're taking this language out, which clarifies and, you know, the moratorium language will be significant, but would have, it would have to be a significant process and would not be just an easy thing that the county could do if they all of a sudden had to develop or something like that. So those are, those are some of the changes we're looking at today in today's version. Staff is still recommending approval with these changes. We feel that it outlines what the development is going forward. I forgot, the one other thing I wanted to talk about was in commercial use. On page two, starting in the bottom of page two, we're referencing a commercial designation. It's very important to call this out. Right now, they have 18.3 acres, which is 35% of the project designated as commercial. That meets the county's town center zoning ordinance standard. What they have put in here is that they will market it and hold that there for five years, market it as commercial, but after five years, if nothing...
Which number is this?
This is bottom of page two, paragraph A. Yeah. But, oh, no, we don't. So anyway, so the first step would be that after five years, they could drop that to 20%. And then that 15% that gets taken off would be able to convert to multifamily, and it would stay. So that would be option number one, if after five years, no commercial designation. Option number two, or the second way that that commercial could change is that the, if that 18.3 acres was incorporated into the Village of Trapper's Loot development. So the Village of Trapper's Loot will have X number of acres of commercial. If they add in an additional 18.3 and include the commercial requirement for the basin or CW Land's project, then the county, then that would be okay. And this area that's red here, this designation is commercial, would go to multifamily. So the county's concern was that we get a lot of, we have a significant enough commercial area that it works. The developer's concern is that there's only so much commercial that can go in there. If we end up having, it would be approximately 55 acres of commercial in, in the project to the south, that that area could then change to a higher, up to 14 acres per acre. And that's how that's written in there. So the first phase is it's gonna be what it is. If nothing happens within five years, it drops by 15% or it gets incorporated into the Village of Trapper's Loot. And I think, I'll let the developer talk to you more about that aspect, but just to lay out that concept.
So Lance, are you telling me that the concerns that Mark expressed have been incorporated into this version of the development agreement?
Yes.
So they've all been addressed to Mark's satisfaction in the development agreement?
The development agreement was. There are a couple of issues. He brought up storm drainage. Trails. Trails. The trails have been addressed. The storm drains would be addressed, but they didn't apply in the process. So a couple of his items are just kind of a heads up to, when you plat, you're gonna have to make sure and address storm drain. I left my paper over there, so...
Storm drain is, is an issue in every single area that we're developing in Mountain Green at this point, and it is part of the list of municipal services that the county should probably consider for that area. But my concern is, it's not very often that I see a unanimous motion for denial from the Planning Commission, and that this, in its original form, had that through the Planning Commission. But the notes from the staff says, we've addressed all of those, but if... With that unanimous denial, is that, is it standard for it to come to the council with the changes in place without the Planning Commission looking at it again?
That's where it's at. In addition to that fact that the development agreement is, as the code is written, comes directly to the County Council and doesn't necessarily go to the Planning Commission. As a land use application, I felt that we should take that to the Planning Commission initially and get their basic feedback, and their significance concern was over the lack of commercial area. And so the applicant has addressed that in their changes.
Okay, so then specifically on the development area without, so this is in incorporation of recitals, no, sorry, wrong one, reduction of commercial use designation in A, where it's the automatic, the commercial area from 35% to 20% of the development area without any further action being required by the developer and the county. Marketing is very subjective in how much effort is, is taken in that. So there can be absolutely, you can say you're marketing it with one little teeny 12 by 12 sign or less in the area and call it marketing. That, that's a very subjective standard for how's the county have any reassurances with the way it's written now that there was actually marketing of the area done.
We would just have to look at what they've done and what their marketing plans were.
But without it being in a contract, there's nothing to hold them to. It's, it's a good faith agreement, right? We're just assuming.
They have to provide the documentation, but we don't have standards for what that documentation is.
Member Cannon's raising a legitimate concern. I don't have any problem with the concept of the reduction. I think the mechanism to get to the reduction needs to be a little more robust than what's presently stated in the document.
You're talking about the 35% to 20%?
To the 20% without further action on either side.
Right now, it says, there to use commercially reasonable efforts to procure commercial tenants. And so maybe we need to find that better or we use different terms, but that's what it says right now, basically industry standard.
I don't even have a problem with commercially reasonable efforts. What I think is that there ought to be a process where they say, we're at year number five, we're coming in, we're showing you what we've done and what we believe is commercially reasonable efforts, and we believe it justifies this, and then they get an approval from the council to move forward. And I understand that's a scary discretionary standard for the developer to subject themselves to, but it, you know, it's not an impossible standard by any means. And I think if they were actively marketing it, saying, look, this is what we did, this is how we showed our planning, this is, these are the, you know, solicitations we got, this is what they were willing to pay for rent, this is why I wouldn't pencil, you know? All of that stuff could go into that discussion. So I, I'm not, I haven't written out specific language for that section that I had a kind of similar concern, so that's, that's one area.
And this isn't to take it or leave it. The county is negotiating the contract, and so it's been proposed by that, the other party, and if this is the first time you've had a chance to really go over it and you need a minute, there's no reason you have to rush into a vote, and you definitely can bring your concerns forward, and that'll be part of the negotiations going forward.
So, so on this, is it public hearing as well? Because...
It's noticed as a public hearing.
Noticed as a public hearing.
Yeah, and I, I think we can have the public hearing, but if there's additional comments for, or questions for staff, we ought to ask those. We ought to give the applicant an opportunity to speak, and then we can open our public hearing. I will also note, there were comments at the back of this that the staff has received from neighbors that are in the record as well.
I just want to piggyback on what Member Cannon brought up on the changes. Not getting these until just now, I obviously haven't had time to review them completely, but just at first glance, Wasatch Civil's comment number six about the public trails indicated that there's nothing discussing the maintenance, ongoing maintenance of those trails. And in your change, you didn't address that either. And so if you go to 12D, it just says that it will be installed and paid for by the developer, but it still doesn't address the maintenance and the ongoing maintenance, whether it be a homeowners association or the county or whoever it be, as it was stated in his, in his comment. And so I think we need a little more time to go through those changes and review those and make sure that we're good with the changes based on the comments that the engineer had, as well as, I'll, I'll reserve my other comments for the commercial reduction when we come back to discuss as a council after your public hearing and after the applicant's had his opportunity.
Can you point out the trail that they're talking about?
Actually, no. Let me go pull it up.
The only trail I see is right there between the yellow.
Yellow and the green, kind of that linear part.
Right in the, right in the middle of the, the yellow, where that little cul-de-sac is coming from Rollins Ranch, there's a little trail right there. That's the only thing I see.
Yeah, that, right now, that's the only thing that's connecting those two neighborhoods. And, and one of...
Correct.
And that development asked to have their trails removed, so.
Well, part of them, just the ones in the lower part.
The reason, and I think, to be fair, I think what CW Land is trying to do here is to connect the neighborhoods, because that's been my concern, is if we're trying to make a walkable community and, and we're not connecting any of the roads with Rollins Ranch, then what we're doing is, is really segmenting that area of the community. It's not very well thought out long-term for what you want a community to be. And, but I, I realize that I can't do that, I can't make Rollins Ranch connect to CW Land. I understand where you're going with it, and I, and I can't put that burden on CW Land, and I think that's what they're trying to do with the trail. So that's where it, I struggle with making it a trail that has to be maintained by a homeowners association, when what we're trying to do is build a, a walkable community and a connecting community so you can actually get to your backdoor neighbor.
But what it does highlight is the need to be so careful on these changes that we make to these developments and the way we do these development agreements, because when they created the Rollins Ranch, PRUD, I believe it was, they actually had these roads stubbed for connection. They had these trails stubbed for connection. And then over time, that development, that homeowners association came in and asked to have those taken away because they're never going to need those. Why do we have them here? And the council agreed and let them make those changes. Well, guess what? Few years down the road, where are we at? We've now got a need for that connection in order to have this flow as a community needs to flow instead of everything being these pods around the county. And because we went ahead and let, gave in to that request, we find ourselves in this situation. That's going to lead to some of the other discussion we're going to have later is, we might, we might not see that need now, but if we're really planning for the future, it may not be the most ideal thing for that developer at this time and the most financially beneficial thing for that developer, but it might be the best thing for this community in the long run. I realize that Lieutenant Governor's Office is saying that Mountain Green incorporating right now based on the land that they were able to include in their study is not feasible. That doesn't mean it's never going to be feasible.
No, it's going to be eventually.
And it's going to happen. And I think we need, with this process and this, this application, we need to take very close look at long-term future, because I've argued for years that this should be the incorporated community of Mountain Green making these decisions. We're not going to get that, not in my tenure. I wish we did, but it's going to be us making those. We have a responsibility to think of it along those lines and not limit what this community can become or what they can do just to accommodate a developer's wishes at this point. And then I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
Okay, do I want to hear from the staff, the applicant first?
Oh, you want to do that first?
Yeah, let's, let's hear from the applicant, and then if there's comments you want to make after the public hearing, you can respond.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it, Chair and Commissioners. We did get these comments today. We, we applied, our application's been in for quite some time, the development agreement's been in for quite some time. We did receive these from Mr. Miller today, and we have accepted them. I talked with both our council and Mr. Evans, and we have accepted these changes. Primarily, a lot of them were from Mr. Miller's perspective regarding the subdivision process, clarifying that we do have to go through the subdivision process. Just because we have the development agreement does not negate the responsibility we have to do a concept plan for the final plat, nor does it relieve us of any of those responsibilities. Regarding number seven of this comment regarding storm drain, as you'll notice on that, it's not necessarily need to be addressed in the development agreement, it's more of, hey, here's a heads up, we have to take care of the storm drain. We have talked with several parties about how to resolve that. Mr. Gardner across the street, security maintenance low down, and the state of Parsons regarding various storm wash things. So we have accepted these changes into the development agreement. Regarding the trails, we've worked extensively with the neighborhood, those people that we can talk, talk to. This right here reflects, and I apologize, I, I erroneously referred to the capicilias plan, but there is a trails plan that the county has done at some point, if I recall. What, what we're trying to do is get pedestrians from Rollins Ranch into our community and then down to what would be the town center. So in blue, those represents the trails that are on that, that plan. We also have, what I feel is very important, is making sure we have a trail up to the school from highway. And so that's what those, those reds are additional trails that will be provided. We will have many more trails with the more, with the more portion, of course. When I say trails, it's going to be something more substantial than concrete, so we've outlined there an eight-foot asphalt trail. So, and, and we're okay with the maintaining of those, if that's beneficial to the county. If there's some limited resources of piling them or whatever, putting them within our HOA.
Oh, I think you could say that.
I think that's something that we would be...
At least they're all for subdivision.
So we will have an HOA.
They don't have a plow that small.
We can't get our 10-wheeler on there.
We do a lot of these communities, and we learn a lot of things. We learn what's good for our HOA, and we have various managers, and we speak often with our managers of the HOAs. So part of what we do is we go through an interview process with our HOA provider. We have several, what are their capabilities? Obviously, up here, you have a mountainous terrain, you have heavy snow removal obligations. And so the HOA company that we would select would very well understood those. So that's why I'm up here saying that I think the HOA would maintain the, the trail from our experience, that's what it is. If there's any more questions, I'm more than happy to talk about the commercial aspect of it. We've had a very robust discussion over time, and we're very flexible in that. I'm not saying what we're saying is right. Purely want to say that we've, we've done some studying, this is our best base of effort, and we're more than happy to make some modifications if needed. So with that said, any more questions for me?
No, but I would like to come into on the work that you have done. I know, I know you've done a lot of work on it, and, and you've made really good faith efforts to make these changes, and, and I want you to know I recognize that. It's just...
It's new to you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I care passionately about this, and I want to make sure that the community is aware and doesn't feel like it was a brush process.
Yeah, very interesting. Thank you.
Okay.
You want a motion?
I would love a motion.
Motion for public hearing.
Second up. Motion in a second to go into public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Oh, without Sarah, no one's going to time.
Remote control is locked. Sarah didn't leave me the key to the remote.
Hi, Sarah. Tina Kelly. Since you don't see the room full of people, there's a lot of things going on, and I'm, I'm betting that the community doesn't even know this is in existence right now, because after the planning commission meeting, they lost track of what was going on, so they're all dead. I am concerned, I don't want you to rush into something. As Robert says, the development agreements, we enter into them, and then somebody looks at the wording and says, oh, that's not what was meant here. Well, that's what we meant. Well, that doesn't matter. This is what the definition says. So I hope you're reviewing it very carefully and take it, take everything into consideration. I didn't have a chance to, I didn't, to be honest, I didn't download it till today, so I haven't had a chance to review it. But the, what you were saying about the percentage just changing from 35 to 20, that is clearly not what the community wants, that is clearly not what the planning intended by the town center or most, they didn't want. We don't, I don't want corporation, I'm great. Go ahead, don't have any more development. I'm great with that. But if you want the community to develop the way that you outlined it, then you need more business there. And that's what every, if you look at the notes in there from the planning commission meeting, there were a lot of citizens here telling you that we don't need any more houses, we need more businesses. And that's what they, that's what they think is going to happen on that ground. I'm not sure what words you can put into the document to, to make, ensure that it's what you want, that you get the percentage that you want, but if, and I'm not saying anything against the developer, I have a personal work with this developer, but if you say measurably, that he, or I can't remember the word you used, that he's going to go out and sell that, and so he shows the property to one person in, in five years, at, you're a different council, you're reading it differently, has he really tried to sell it, and now he gets to change that percentage from 35 to 20%? I'm really not comfortable with that. I don't think the community would be comfortable with it. Just really don't rush into it. Like John said, you've got time to review this and, and give it the language that you want to put in there. That's a negotiation back and forth between you, but you can say what you want. There's, there's nothing to stop you from doing that. Thanks.
Thanks, Tina. Anyone else that would like to address the council on this issue?
I'll move to go out of public hearing.
Motion in a second to go out of public, public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comments from the council with respect to the development agreement. I will say that I've read through it, I, there are some issues and concerns that I have. I'm not opposed to the project by any means, and I understand the, the development agreement was submitted a while ago. I read it back in November, December, when it was first on the agenda, and had marked it up to a certain degree then, and then it was pulled off, and so, but I haven't focused on it since. So I'm happy to go through some of my concerns, and I know some of you have them as well, so.
Overall, I, I'd like some time to go back and forth, because I had gone through that one, but that, there have been changes since then in the redlined areas, so my personal thought is I, I'm not comfortable with doing this today, but I do have a couple more questions on, on the specifics. I did get an update from Marie Owens yesterday morning on the status of water in the area that will be, that will continue to be an issue. Do you have, have you, where are you leaning on water at this point? I know it's not something I can require, but have you been doing, have you been following this discussion? Is impacting development in Mountain Green substantially at this point?
Yeah, we haven't followed it. We're very much aware of it. I, I think from our perspective, as a group that does development, we have a long-term interest in this community. We don't, we don't just entitle property and sell on paper to someone else. We operate in a community, so we're very much aware of the water situation, we're very much interested in the solution of it. We've obviously had much discussions of both Highlands and Cottonwood Mutual, and we continue to have both of those, those discussions. Coincidentally, we are within the boundaries of both of those districts, this, this property. And both districts have pros and cons, and we're very much aware of the pros and cons.
Is Highlands aware that you're in the district of both? Because I keep being told that yours is right smack in the middle of theirs, and...
I, we have, yes, we have both.
All right. So if you'll, I'd like to be able to forward you that update that came from the Division of Drinking Water, so that you know what the status is from a neutral party.
Thank you very much, yeah. We, I would appreciate that.
All right.
Any other comments? I can go through a few if you'd like.
I, I just want to re-go back to number 32A, reduction in commercial...
32AAC51.
Yeah, that one. Reduction in commercial designation. Just to reiterate what I was saying before, and with all due respect to Member McConnell, as I was listening to the last meeting, you had made a comment that you kind of believed that would be all the commercial area we would need in that area. And I don't, I'm not quoting, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm paraphrasing what I thought I heard. That brought a little concern to me with, in regards to this reduction and that comment, just that we don't know where Mountain Green's going to end up. And we see a lot of communities where they don't plan big enough, and then they start spreading out. And there's lots of better examples out there, but Commercial Street in Morgan is the most isolated street they've got. They cannot expand their commercial at all. So it's expanded down and sprawled out in multiple directions. This plan, the DAT, and all those things have been used over the years to try and come up with a, a community that those residents felt like was the community they wanted to have. By, by reducing that and shrinking this down in a, in a matter as short as five years, I, I go through communities, I work in a lot of different construction projects and stuff, and I see, I see a grocery store that's sitting there with all these pads for whatever, restaurants, banks, anything. And sometimes those are there for 10, 15, 20 years. And then all of a sudden, boom, those fill up overnight, because all of a sudden, the demand and the need is there. If we allow that to turn into homes, there's no way for that to ever meet that need at that point. So now, we're sticking commercial islands out in the middle of these residential areas wherever we can find a spot. They have asked for their commercial to be centralized, basically from the off-ramp, the current off-ramp, up to the new interchange, and then across to the old farm and this property right here. By reducing this or allowing the reduction of this in as, as little as five years, I think is lacking foresight. I think that depending on how things go, and we've already identified that without this, you have to the tune of close to 4,000 potential lots, if you're snow basin plan, I'm not talking the resort itself, I'm talking the residential part of their plan were to go, the need for commercial, I think, would be exponential, and we will, in five, that may not happen for 10, 15, or 20 years, but in five years, we will have given up that space. And so I propose that any reduction in that commercial be removed, and that we stick with the spirit of what that town center zoning was meant for, and we keep that commercial as big as we can, so that as this community grows, that we can show the foresight that we allowed for space for the commercial part to sustain that community to grow with it, rather than them now having to find a new area to move the commercial to. The other thing is, one thing they've figured out over there in Park City with Kimball Junction is, they put that interchange in, and they stuck all that commercial down, and everything around it, it's basically locked. That's what they can do until they make changes to their, all that other land in between those buffer zones. But they're, they're so crammed in there, the last number I heard from the county engineer up in Summit County was to the tune of $150 million to fix that issue that they have right there. I would recommend we don't open the door right now to put ourselves in that same kind of a situation, that we, we allow, that we really work hard to maintain at least the base of what was set up in this initial design process, so that we leave that, that designation in there.
Okay. Any other comments?
Are you suggesting that we change it from five years to a, a different timeframe, or keep it...
Remove it completely, that it stays 35%. I don't, I don't personally think that's too much for that location. Now, if this was up behind your subdivision, that might be a different story, but because that's where they've designated they want their town center, and with the, the amount of growth that, over the next 30, 40 years, that this area could see, I don't think, I think it's still a small amount.
So I'll, I'll respond to the comment and tell you where I'm coming from.
Please do.
So, I'm trying to strike the balance between where Mountain Green is now, the amount of residential housing it has to have in order to support a commercial town center, and not to grow Mountain Green to be the size of South Jordan. So, so I'm, I'm, I, I agree, if we were to allow it to continue to develop and grow, you know, just work its way off the county, we would... you know, just work its way off the county, we would need more commercial area than is being planned, this thirty-five percent, and the Johnson property, all of that would be insufficient. That's not really where I want to go. I want to get enough residential house tops in Mountain Green to support the commercial town center that a lot of people seem to want there. But from my perspective, that commercial town center, it's more like small towns that you drive into that have a block or two of commercial uses. I mean, even, even Park City's Main Street, you know, that's a great street in terms of walking and going into various little shops of different types and so forth. There's a grocery store in a different location. That's probably a lot more than Mountain Green I would think would need over time. And I was simply trying to focus, if, if we expanded the town center over on the other side of the highway, so that when people came and stayed and there's a plaza and worked in that area, that would be fine. I do think there is a place for commercial property on the other side. I think it's more the drive-up commercial, I think the corner should stay commercial. But, I mean, we're all crystal balling that, so I don't, I mean, I understand, I agree with your point, you know, if we were going to continue to grow it, and, and I don't know when the, I don't know when the snow basin thing will happen. I hope it happens. If you read that report that Tina had, I mean, talked about the millions of dollars that flow past and never, and never stop. I mean, I guess they stop at the Sinclair, you know, but that's a limited option. So, anyway, I mean, I think you make a good point in that regard, but that's, that's kind of where I'm just trying to strike that balance of growing enough to support a commercial town center, because nobody wants to have it come in and fail, because that's, that's, I, you never like to look at all that vacant space. I mean, even there on Harrison Boulevard, the Woodbury, where the Woodbury Development, it's a fresh market, and there's, there's been vacant space in that center and the little commons area next to it. There's always a considerable amount of vacant space there, and you drive by, and it's like, there's a lot of rooftops around here, you know, why is that not successful? Why is it not working? So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think we have fairly common views. I just am striking a different balance point in terms of what I think I want to see it have, you know, become. I don't want to...
So, and I appreciate you expanding on that. I like what you're saying. How do you, other than putting a chokehold on the commercial, how else do you address that potential growth so that you can contain it, so that it doesn't become South Jordan?
Well, our zoning does a lot to do that now, and I don't know what pressures the state legislature will put, I don't know what pressure our property owners will put on us over time. And it won't be me, you know, either, you know? As communities evolve and grow and so forth, and, you know, if, if the demand for the Wasatch Front is as high as they estimate it will be by 2040, I think we're going to have a hard time, you know, keeping that block up at the mouth of the canyon to say, no, we want to keep this rural. I mean, one of the reasons I like Wasatch Peaks was because of the dedication of the open space, because once that's dedicated, it takes it out of the development window. It's a private covenant issue and an agreement with the county, and that's the agreement they made. So, anyway.
I agree with you on that. Sorry, did you want to go? Go ahead.
Well, one of the things I'd like to point out has been an active discussion in regional growth and in Transportation Committee and all of those, but this discussion is going to change as COVID hits, and the long-term impacts of COVID hit. We don't know if thirty-five percent commercial property is going to be sustainable anywhere anymore. Commercial property is not in demand the way residential property is, but residential property out of the Wasatch Front and out of the density issues of the Wasatch Front is. That demand has increased, not decreased. But what we're seeing, the impact in commercial, is everything is going online, more spread out. I'm not so sure what businesses will survive commercial property, and even in Class A office space, how many of those will survive coming out of this. In the meeting we had before the meeting here, that's one of the things that they're finding, is we're not going back to normal. This was a nine eleven event. We won't go back to that. And to have the flexibility as we address all of these issues for what will the commercial demand be, what will it look like? Will it, will it survive in Class A, or will that all be work from home? Those are, those are issues that are going to evolve over time, that we don't have the crystal ball to know what the answers are for that, but we do need to be aware that some of the concerns we have may never, we may never go back to where that's feasible for this area. So, just my thoughts.
I was going to say, when we did the town center land use regulations in the first place and established that zoning, I remember having a lot of discussion on the Planning Commission about that. And I personally was of the opinion that it should have been a lot higher than thirty-five percent, because there's just so, so limited area in our county for commercial development, period, understanding that that development might take twenty years. Like you say, you don't, you don't know what's going to happen. So, I agree, I don't like this reduction from thirty-five to twenty percent, period. I would rather that be removed, but I am curious what your thoughts are on the second half of that, in allowing them to pool that thirty-five percent on one side of the road or the other. I'm curious of that, for the whole council, just...
Yeah. Here's where I'm at on that. I'm not a fan. Not a fan. There's just too many questions there. The, Lance, maybe you can answer, who is the owner of the property across the road?
Gardner.
It's Gardner's?
Hmm, it's still, Sutherby.
I think it's still, yeah, Sutherby Johnson.
My understanding is it's Sutherby. I've sat in this room, well, and I won't say a threat, but basically, a threat of, we will end up in court if you ever try and open my development agreement. Making a decision based on the current owner's viewpoints about ever adjusting that development agreement that he's expressed to this council, I have issues with that, along those lines. If that individual, the current owner of the property, or the future owner were to come in and make that same discussion, I could probably be persuaded otherwise. But based on the comments that we have had from the current owner, I don't see that ever happening, that development agreement ever happening, opening for that discussion. And until something changes there, I don't think we should base any decisions on a hypothetical along those lines.
So, so Ruland Gardner is working with the Johnsons, and there are some strong attitudes and perceptions of the right way to proceed on that side of the road. Let me just put it that way. And there's a fear in the, on the development side of things to open a development agreement, because people, I mean, I think it was Grant Crowell who said that, in whatever planning seminar he went to, that whenever you open up a development agreement, you have to exact something more. That's something they taught in planning. And I'm like, what if the proposal from the developer is a net benefit for the jurisdiction? That shouldn't be the case. You shouldn't say, hey, we're here to do something better. Well, in order to do it, we're going to take something else away from you. And, and I think that's the perception that the Johnsons have, is that if it opens up somehow, it'll, it'll take it away. I mean, that something will be taken away from them. But they did come in together as part of the work session last time to talk about this concept. So it is something that I know they're discussing between the two of them, and there's a variety of discussions going on in terms of the long-term plan and acquisition and so forth of that property. So there's no way I could make a promise, I'm not even involved in all of the discussions, but I know that that's going on, and I think they're just trying to plan for that possibility. So if you took it, if you, if you say that it could happen, let's say that it did happen, my only view to answer your question is, I think you make a better center and village core by keeping it on one side of the highway than spreading it across the highway. The highway's not huge, but it, it's not insignificant in terms of traffic volume and pedestrians crossing. And so, if you are trying to create a pedestrian, you know, a village or community type of place, if you can keep them from having to cross just to enter, you know, go from one restaurant to the store and so forth, that's why I say, I think if you reduce it and you did drive-up commercial on their side and on the corner, that makes perfect sense to me. If, on the other hand, you say, you know what, the Johnson development's taking too long, we want you to put the center on their side of the road, then you would switch it. They just don't have as much acreage to do it. And then you get into your question, have we saved enough? So, but my, that's, that's, my, my principal reason for wanting more there in terms of the village and walkable community is, I think that makes for a better sense of place, and that's what makes those places more vibrant, is if you have a good sense of place where people come and enjoy, they spend, you know, not just the dinner hour there, but another thirty to forty-five minutes after walking around the plaza and looking around at the shops and stuff like that. Anyone else want to respond to Member Newton's question?
So, I personally feel I, I like it better on, on the south side, because, and that is what was envisioned in the DAT, but the only thing that makes that feasible is the interchange. That's the only thing that makes that feasible. And it doesn't succeed without it, which is why it's been such an important part of it. It's also, but quite frankly, the commercial on the other side will not be feasible, even in the CW land section, it won't be feasible without the interchange going in. And right now, on, on the Fourth of July, there was a steady stream of cars across Trappersloupe, a steady stream, not, no break, for hours. I don't know where they were going. I, I've never seen it that busy, but it continues that way. And people go through the area all the time, and there isn't any place to stop other than Sinclair. And Sinclair does a phenomenal amount of business. They're crazy to pay that much for gas. It's the most expensive place in the western United States, I've checked. But there's the point, is there are a lot of things that can, we're not going to stop growth, but getting out in front of it and planning it for what will be the best thing for that community. It's not the community that I moved into twenty years ago. I agree with Tina Kelly. I love, I love the rural fill. It's not there anymore. Most of the areas in Mountain Green that have grown were hayfields when I came. But to get out in front of it and plan it correctly is absolutely crucial for the success of the county and the success of that community specifically. So that, that's why I think it is important that we're careful, that we're sure what we're doing, and that we make the best effort possible for it to succeed. And I would reiterate again, that that is why the commercial section is important, and that depends on the interchange and why it has been the economic emphasis that it has been.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm with Member Kilmer, Member Newton. I do not want any of the reduction on the commercial. I don't want any avenue at all on the reduction, I think thirty-five percent. It was a, it was a debated item through the Planning Commission. They spent a lot of time on it, trying to come up with a number. We told them we wanted them to give us a number. That's what they come up with. So, no offense intended, but I'm against reducing that. Member Newton asked about, you know, it's been mentioned about moving it to the other side. Johnsons have, and it depends on, because Lance and I are in disagreement on this, which is okay, Johnsons have a hundred and eight acres in their development agreement. Thirteen point nine of it is their commercial, is designated as their commercial. They've sold twenty of it to the county, to the state, okay, which takes them to eighty-eight acres, which, if you do thirty-five percent, or thirty-five percent of eighty-eight acres, that's another thirty acres that you're looking at. I don't think Johnsons are going to want to put forty-three acres in commercial on their property. Member Kilmer mentioned about building out, which, if you look at developments, you know, that's what they tell you, you need to build out away from it. I don't like reducing the village, the town center area any smaller. I think we need to leave it where it is to allow for that. You know, we've already got three thousand plus homes, if not more, already approved for the Mountain Green area. My, part of my biggest concern, and Member McConnell and I had this discussion before, is stopping the leakage from everybody shopping in Ogden, because they're all working in Ogden. We've had multiple developers tell us that we need rooftops in order to sustain commercial business. So we're kind of at a, you know, in my opinion, kind of at a stalemate. Do we approve more houses, or do we just wait and see where the, if the commercial will ever start to develop, which, you know, I think that's where we need to go. As far as, as far as your deal there, I'm kind of confused, because on our, on our, on our packet, it shows pictures that the lower portion is just like a small park, there's not any residential, it shows town centers on the west side, but yet on this one here, it shows the commercial area. I guess so, so part of my question is, which one is it that we're actually talking about? Because this one is on, on our packet, is one thirty-one.
I don't have a packet. I know what you see right here is...
So this is what you're proposing here? All that up in there, commercial? Okay? And then the other, the other thing, because we've had a heated discussion about this also, the, the trail systems, I'm not a fan of trail systems, mainly because they end up becoming the responsibility of, of the county. And if they stay the HOA and they take care of and maintain them, I ain't got a problem with that. I just don't want them turned over to the county that we have to maintain them and take care of them. The, the other deal is, I'm not in favor of being able to add additional property into this particular development agreement. I think it needs to be, you know, addressed on a separate topic if you're going to add into the areas. But, I mean, I'm just trying to figure, unless you're looking at that corner piece down there, that's pretty much why you got that and the Warner property. There's not a whole bunch more land that can be incorporated into this that's contiguous. But that's just my opinion. And then, just a question for you, you got, the Warners have got an agricultural easement up through the backside on that west side? Just a question to you, how are you going to address isolating, or is that going to be part of a trail system? You putting a fence along that right-of-way?
No, we spoke a lot with the Warners. We view them as kind of partners in our project, and it will be part of the green space that will come up. In fact, you can see some green there of where we believe it is. I believe it's a prescriptive easement, is what I believe. And so, through the subdivision process, we've committed to work with them through that.
Okay. Well, I mean, so, so you're just going to add that part of, incorporate that into part of your open space?
That's correct, yeah. We also show stuff to their properties so they can have better vehicular access and try and be neighborly to them.
Okay.
Just addressing one of your comments. So, at the work session where they came last time with Ruland, the, there is the original land that's subject to the Johnson development agreement. There's additional land that's been acquired. I think, if I've got the number right, it's like an additional thirty-nine acres of ground. So...
But it's not a part of their original development?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It would come in, if they came in and proposed the town center on that side, it would be incorporating both the Johnson commercial land plus the additional land that they've proposed. And they had, I didn't bring my packet from last time, but they, they had some stuff that they shared with us. I'm just, there's just some additional acreage there.
So there's nine acres and the backster land, which is thirty-five, so it's a total of forty-four.
So forty-four more acres. So, so, okay. Couple of issues that I have with respect to this. So, I just wanted to understand the act... So, I just wanted to understand the access points that are referred to in Section 3C. Under access, says, "In order to satisfy the requirements of primary and secondary, developer may rely upon and use the two access points to the south of the project as depicted on the concept plan." Is that just the two exits out onto Old Highway?
Yeah, we initially, we initiated this process, call it, two years ago. That was a question that came up, so that's, those are the two access points.
Okay.
The other access point that was considered at the time was actually coming over here in wrong branch, and we since learned that that's not feasible.
Okay, all right. The short and long-term rental provision in this, which is in Section 3E.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with short and long-term rentals. Do we have an ordinance that addresses that in the county? Okay.
Where are you at?
E.
E, okay.
If we're going to allow them, we should capture the revenue from them. Open space, not all of the revenue. The tax revenue. And I don't mean to be offensive to people in South Jordan, I lived there a long time, I loved it. I just don't anticipate us being that big, that's what I was saying. The anticipated acreage for open space within the project is identified in the concept plan.
Do we have a number for that?
Yeah. So, it says, "Open space will develop according to the Morgan County Town Center Design Standards." So, is there a specific standard with respect to open space development that we're relying on there?
It's very brief, but yes.
Okay, do we believe we need to do anything else in terms of specificity? One of the things I had a hard time with, I saw the use table that got incorporated, and then when it got back into the actual development standards, which in this zone have to kind of be flushed out vis-à-vis the agreement, I was, part of it was the copying, some of them ended up being upside down and switched around, and I'm not sure I was tracking that clearly. So, if we could get another set where that's kind of clearly identified. So, what are we addressing specifically in this agreement in terms of, call it, design guideline and development standard? Are we principally relying on our code? Are there specific things that the developer's proposing in terms of setback, height, building elements, or any of those kinds of things?
That's a great question. Do you want to take that, or do you want me to answer?
Two acres, 2.2. They, we took out some of the language in the development agreement that referenced that, just because it was not clear what standard we would be following, and didn't want to confuse the issue. So, that's in the new guidelines. This is the only design standards that they have, so they'll follow this site plan that's being shown here with the single-family homes, patty homes, townhomes, the kind of the basic home setup and the townhome setup. And then everything else differs to the town center design standards.
Yeah, and I'll add one addition to that. So, the Town Center Design Center does not talk about setbacks, they leave it to us, and so we've included that within the design guidelines. So, that, there's an exhibit that's provided as a part of the DA that talks about, you know, how far off the property line for each product type and lot coverage, et cetera.
So, I remember those fairly well for the commercial elements. I'll have to go back and look at them for the residential then. But they're there?
They're there.
Okay, I'll just go back and look at those.
And here's the three standards for the open space.
What's the code reference? And I'll look at it separately. Say that again. Okay.
It's minimal, it's, you do have to have trees and landscaping, the trails have to be maintained, zero-scape's encouraged, supplemental, so.
So, does it give us a percentage of open space? My PRUD has had a percentage.
I don't think it does.
Okay.
You'll see it there, that's the, I believe that's the trail map that I was referring to earlier.
So, they have a trail system that matches this, they now have a trail that comes through here, the second blue line, slightly darker there, so it's higher means.
Yeah.
But we are considering the pedestrian connection long-term.
Okay.
In Item G, the last sentence, so this is a development report, and you sell units off to sub-developers. There's a sentence in here that says, "If any portion of the residential units transferred to a sub-developer are not used, then such unused portions shall automatically revert back to the developer to be used consistent with the concept plan for future undeveloped portions of the property." I have no problem in concept, I'm not sure I want that in the development agreement with the county. If you and your sub-developer have that agreement and say you don't use it, we get it back, and you keep us informed as to what you do and don't do, that's fine. I guess I don't, if they're not giving it back, I don't want you to come back to the county and say, hey, it's said in here, and we're using this as the enforcement mechanism, and all of a sudden, we're an indispensable party to a lawsuit to enforce it. I don't, unless there's some, unless you guys really feel strongly that that ought to happen automatically or vis-à-vis this agreement, I'd prefer it stay between the two of them. That's my only comment there. In Section 4, oh, I'll look at that in connection, I'll just go back and look at the code requirements with respect to design standards. In 5B, in the parenthetical, in the second, that starts in the second line, "Shall impose upon the project, whether by initiative, referendum, or other means, any ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, standard directive." I'd like to strike the word referendum. I understand why you would want to put it in. But what I don't want to have happen is sign a development agreement, and then you say we're in default because citizens file a referendum. The last sentence, I'm fine with that, it's a difficult concept.
Keep it back to G for a second?
Sure.
Just for clarification. When you say keep it between them, are you referring to, because I'm assuming this is referring to the 244 units that they're asking for, not necessarily acreage. Are you referring to, they have to transfer the acreage back in order to retain those units? Or are you saying they can move those units around because that guy didn't use all that he had applied to his acreage?
So, if they, the way I read your paragraph, is if they make an assignment, if they sell a portion of the property, one of their phases, call it, and they say, "In connection with that acreage, you get 50 of our units." And then as they come out and do the development process, they only use 48 of the units, then if those two units get transferred back to be used on another portion of the property and it's still within the density limits, I don't care. If you want them to necessarily be tied to the 50 acres, we'd have to say something different that's in here. And my perspective is, we would have allowed them to move it, if they self-developed, we would have allowed to move it around anyway. So, from my perspective, the fact that it comes back, I just don't want to be caught in the middle of the comeback argument.
Well, we potentially could have allowed it to move around anyway. If it goes against, you know, if all of a sudden they're switching the single-family homes to multifamily in order to get the density that they're looking for, we probably wouldn't allow that, because we had already agreed that that's going to be large lots, single-family, or something like that.
No, I agree with that. I'm just saying, if you had three of the phases in the townhomes, and they were, don't you mostly self-develop anyway?
We do.
If they were developing phases one, two, and three, they're going to come in and do it, and we're going to allow them propose whatever they propose in terms of the unit count, as long as it's compliant with the code and the agreement. And I'm not interested in penalizing them if Phase 2, they sold to someone else, and they ended up, and we would never even talk about those density units other than what was presented. If they sold it to somebody else and they came in and said, well, we got 50, so we want 50 on here, and we said, no, under the code, you can only do 48. If it was them, they would just apply it in the next phase, to the extent they could. So, anyway, that's my perspective on it. Let's see.
About that one? I got a question.
So, this is one sentence I highlighted at the end of Section 5B, and it's just something I'm thinking about. What they're basically saying is, this whole section vests their rights in accordance with the existing ordinances of the county and this development agreement. If we change an ordinance that gives more flexibility on one issue or another, this allows them to say, we'd like to have that ordinance applied to us. If I'm writing one of these for the developer, I usually include that provision. And I don't view it sitting in this seat as being harmful if it's generally applied other places in the county, then the fact that they can come back and rely upon it and use it, to me, isn't a big deal. I mean, I guess you could maybe think up of a scenario where it might fundamentally alter. Like, if we came in and rezoned their property to allow 30-story buildings, then yeah, we would be fundamentally altering it. But if we rezoned it, we did it intentionally because we wanted 30-story buildings.
Okay, well, part of my question on that is, the last deal, so developer may elect to request that the new law apply to the project. So, I guess my question, the way I'm reading this, is if a new ordinance changes, which is going to be beneficial, all you have to do is come in and request it, and you get My question is, I would like something on there that it may be accepted or rejected. We don't have to give them or grant them that new request.
So, that's a middle ground. You come in, you request, we consider it and say, hey, it makes sense here, or?
No, it doesn't.
No, we didn't mean to allow 30-story buildings on there.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, because to me, the way this is wrote, it just is, all he's got to do is come in and request it. It doesn't tell us that we can or cannot deny it.
It's interesting language, "may elect to request." So, anyway, you understand his position there, it's kind of, he'd prefer a middle ground, you request, we consider.
If it's any beneficial, I don't know if we've ever utilized this at all. I think the closest thing maybe is if engineering standards have altered in the city or the county, and so now instead of 25 feet of pavement, you want 24. And that's a new ordinance, maybe that's something that's applied to.
Yeah.
No question, on your next one, or number C, on letter C?
Yes.
I just really struggle with the word "police power." Should that be something more like legislative power, administer?
It's a term of art, so-
I'm just, I'm asking, it just drives me crazy that they keep saying "police power."
It's accurate. It's accurate, it's a term of art in our field.
County's doing that police power, other than police officers, power to police.
Yeah.
So, it's a term of art that we see.
Term of art.
Yes, so you'll just have, which has nothing to do with art. You'll just have to live with your discomfort on that. I'm happy with the other ones, we discuss and cooperate, we may establish, you reserve rights to, and so forth, but this 4 says, "The county agrees not to protest the establishment of any special service district, improvement district, service area, or other limited purpose governmental entity that includes the property and other property included with the consent of the owners, so long as the district or area does not create any financial liabilities for the county except as may be expressly authorized by county." I don't know, that to me seems like a limitation on our legislative discretion when we were actually evaluating it. I don't, personally, I'm, you're likely not going to have a protest from me. I generally, I understand the needs for those districts and why we would create them and so forth, but I'm a little uncomfortable with that language, and maybe you can consider that one, Jan, just whether or not that's too big of a restraint on our legislative discretion when we're evaluating it. I think that should be something subject to our discretion at the time.
I agree.
Entitled "Create, Seek," I agreed with that. "County in Development Agreement: Continuing Cooperation," I'm okay with that. In this next paragraph, though, so this is 6B, small thing, but we talk about the basin, the property, and the subject property. And you're referring to the same thing every time. And then you have in the middle of it, a similar problem to the last one. "The county agrees that it will exercise any rights reserved to the county under the PIT Act in connection with the establishment or operation of any public infrastructure district for the subject property in accordance with the requirement of the PIT Act." Again, I'm happy to cooperate, I think it's a great idea. I can only speak for myself in terms of the cooperation, that's a council decision, but we need to be careful about retaining our legislative discretion.
Okay, my question on that is, we're referencing a PIT, where unless I missed it, we haven't adopted a PIT yet.
No, but they can request it under the state code now. And they're identifying the process pursuant to which they can come in and make that request, and we're agreeing that if they come in, we'll look at that in good faith and consider it and go through the process. But what I'm saying is, you can't tell us that we have to approve it by this agreement. In 7A, at the end of the first sentence, you just got a space in front of your period. I was reading it, I-
I want to know, is that author, authorized? What was that word I just saw? Is that a real word?
Where is it?
I'll find it and go back to it.
So-
I have never seen that word before.
I think, I'm okay with, we just need to be clear on what roads are intended to be public. And so, as I understood-
Are you on number seven?
Yeah, I'm on number seven.
Okay, go ahead.
So, you're intending all of the roads to be public, right?
Well, all the roads that we build to county standards. And I would imagine, and Lance and I have had this discussion, if you can put the concept plan up. I think the ones that would not be built to county standards are the ones within the multifamily, the townhome units, whether you have a private alley or something like that, in which case they would be maintained by the HOA. But predominantly, if this is a public road here, I would imagine everything this way would be built to county standards and become public roads.
Okay.
So, thinking of the other townhomes that are over there, one of the problems that they've had with that in being private is they don't have anywhere to push their snow to.
Right.
So, keep that in mind.
Yeah, yeah.
The county wouldn't have anywhere to push it to either, so regardless of who's pushing it.
We're actually developing up in Summit County right now, and so we're learning a lot about-
Yeah, it's been a real problem, because their temporary parking over there is now becoming where the snow is all winter long, and that means, that pushed everybody over to the park for parking, but we don't plow the park during the winter either, so it's becoming a continual problem, I hear about it all the time.
So, I'm on to page eight, I don't know if there are comments?
And everybody in this room, if you don't know already, knows that I'm against any more of these being public roads, I want them all to be private. But regardless of whether they're public or private, I think there needs to be, Lance, a very strong effort put into making sure that where we push snow to, regardless of who's doing that snow pushing, is addressed and that those things are there in this development agreement. It may not, our county ordinances may not address it adequately, but because of the issues that we have in the other developments, I think it's important that we make sure we address it here, if at all possible. Understanding it's a negotiation thing, and you can tell us to bite the wall on some of it, but- of it, but I'd at least like to have that conversation, because, you know...
Especially when you're distanced, there's...
That, and that portion of the county, it might be the lowest in elevation, but I think they get a lot of snow.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you this, because it's funny. We had developer develop cul-de-sac, identify the area to push the snow, and then he stuck a fire hydrant right in the middle of it.
Or a street light.
Okay? So, it doesn't do any good to designate if you're going to stick utilities in there, because then they can't, they still can't push snow into there.
So, tell me what you believe in this agreement or in your development is a system improvement? Because there's a section in here on system improvement. It's kind of where you went with trails, and there's already a change in that. I didn't, that's why I asked what the trail was, because I don't, I understand that it's connecting to a public trail system, but it's just the trail system within your project, so I wouldn't generally consider that a system improvement. There's another section in here where you're saying you may install other system improvements, and I'm just not...
Stay with the county on any of those systems. Is that correct?
So, that's a possibility, that if you come in and you're putting in a road and you're putting a storm drain system line in, and we say, "We need to have that line connect X, Y, or Z, and therefore, we want you to upsize," then that's a discussion we ought to have at the time when we do it. Right now, I'm just looking at your roads and systems and thinking. I mean, if, are you taking like, so the drainage from the school site, for example, is that already in the existing road?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, truthfully, the one in the highway division is Highway 30. There's additional above and beyond what we would need to do. That's maybe the only obvious one I would see. I mean, when we're working with the water, we'll work with the respective water company or the sewer district, and we'll handle those. But within our development, I can't imagine any of the roads being upsized above what our needs are. We don't have any pass-through roads. We've already declared we'll take care of the trail, so I don't know, I don't even know if that would be a problem, so...
Don't you have the school district?
What is the plan or requirement for Old Highway on their frontage? I know it's wider in front of Rollins Ranch than in other areas.
Where's the school district road?
Well, I'm just referring to this as the school.
Okay, okay. Because it's wider, isn't it? The school district's road is wider.
But what's the right-of-way width requirement along Old Highway through that area? And are you guys contemplating that? We ought to make sure you're doing that.
Already pretty wide.
It's still just the two lanes, and maybe you're already planning...
There's easement along there.
The turnout lane and all of that.
Yeah, we've done some preliminary, I mean, we're very early on in the process, but we've done some preliminary studies of what's going to happen, whether it be... At one point, we were talking around about with the engineer, there's various scenarios, so we are planning ahead.
I'm not opposed to participation in the system improvement if there's in fact one. I just, when I was looking at it, I wasn't sure where they are.
Old Highway right through there is about 75 feet of right-of-way.
Okay.
So, there's a lot. Johnson Development Agreement requires another 40 feet when that gets developed or to be approved for pedestrian and things like that. So, there's a lot of...
Yeah, I thought, that's my thought, am I working on it, that there's plenty there?
My last comment, Section 14. If you want assignability to be automatic with the release...
Section 14, I'll have a Section 14.
We don't have a 14.
Oh, I'm looking at the white jacket, not at the red one.
Oh, okay.
It's assignability. I think you either need to get, if you're going to assign the development agreement in terms of performance obligations, I think you need to get the county's consent.
Is that the administrator or the county council? We've done it where the county attorney can approve it.
That's, I'm not going to make that call by myself.
I will vote counsel.
We have done that here in I County before, so...
So, let's make it the...
Lance's office, sometimes you delegate them to his office, but I've done with...
And part of my issue is that it's freely assignable and that, and the developer entity's released, and it's like, no, you could assign it to a shell and say, "We're gone, we're done, and good luck getting anything out of that shell."
Yeah, the applicability of it would be, for example, if we were to sell the townhomes, the townhome developer then would be responsible for all the obligations within the development agreements.
So, let's consider with the consent not to be unreasonably withheld, and if they meet, you know, some standard in terms of their ability to perform in terms of experience and financial worth. Those were my comments.
If I could just, first of all, I want to thank you guys for your time. I know we spent a lot of time on this. I just want to circle back to the commercial. We are not opposed to working with the county and the county's vision on the commercial. What we try to do in our communities is we operate them, and we try to be responsive to the market. And I think Member Cannon spoke a lot about what the needs of the market are today. We don't know what they're going to be in 20 years, and we admit that freely. So, if it is the, if the council wants to keep it at 35, I don't think we're opposed to that. We want to make a community that looks nice, that we can maintain, that can be vibrant. We don't want to have commercial just sitting there lagging behind. I can tell you, the technical information that we've gone out and obtained through analysis is probably what you're hearing from every developer. You need more rooftops, you need more rooftops. And that's what we've heard on, whether it's the brokerage community, or we hired a research analyst to look at it, so that's, and we're trying to be responsive to that. In addition to that, I think every public hearing I've been to, in fact, we have two members who are coming to work, live in Mountain Green, they tell me, well, when I was at the public hearing, I referenced Olive Garden, and I about got shouted out of this room. So, I think the desire of most people is they want something small, something, a hamburger shop, or something local. And so, again, that, the plan is...
My wife would really like Olive Garden.
Right.
I want a hamburger shop.
Again, I thought I was, it's the number one sales tax producer in Davis County, so I thought I was, in terms of restaurants, so I thought I was working in terms of that. So, when we look at 35%, we do get, you know, we're trying to dovetail the vision of the community with what the brokerage community and the commercial development community and all that, so that's where that comes from. It's not something arbitrary that we're putting together. But if it is the will of the council, that's not, we're not here to say this or not. We want to be workable, and we can remove that clawback, we call it clawback condition. In terms of the village of Trappers Loop, I think long-term, having a walkable village center and not divided by the highway, I do believe, and our planning partners have told us, that that's probably the best way to do it. That being said, as we've looked into the neighbor, we understand the hurdles that they have to go through to change their plan. And so, when we put that in here, we didn't put it as an automatic release. We want to get going in ours, and if the village of Trappers Loop is able to amend their development agreement, change their plans or whatever, we would like to be considered the 35% of the girls, if we can put together a plan along with them. And that's purely what we're trying to say, is we think it would be a better village center for the community of Mountain Green. And so, I mean, I think there's some smaller town-centered properties, and if, you know, if you own 10 acres and you're trying to put three and a half of it as commercial, that can be problematic. We have enough area on ours that we could probably absorb it. I don't know if it'll be built, but we could absorb it within the plan. I think we're, you know, we're workable that way. So, I did want to circle back on the commercial, so I'm grateful for the feedback there.
Thanks for your comments. So, are you going to take these comments back to your legal counsel and then recirculate to ours and...
Yeah, I do want, I mean, there is a sense of urgency on our part, and I know you hear that from everybody, but I do want to try to be meticulous about this and get all the feedback in and get a copy to you guys that would be in a final draft form. So, if you have any more comments, email them to us, get it to us, and, you know, we'll try to be back in two weeks. Maybe it takes us four weeks, I don't know, by the time we kind of go through it all, but that would be our goal. I don't think anything that's been given to us is on easy board.
Do I have one more question? If I may.
Okay, sure.
Hey, Lance, can you go back, get rid of that zoning map? So, my question is, right there where that trail, between the yellow where you got that trail for the green? Yes. So, you just mentioned about not being feasible to go into Trappers Loop, and the reason I'm asking you that is because...
Rollins Ranch.
Or Rollins Ranch.
The road.
The reason I'm asking that is because that is where, it's my understanding, that is where the Warner's prescriptive easement ends, is right there at that cul-de-sac, that little loop. So, is there any, is there any way, I'm just looking at trying to get back to the original plan with Rollins Ranch to try and tie those two together? Are you saying that there is no chance of working with Rollins Ranch and making that tie into there with a road?
Yeah, that's a good question. We spent quite a bit of time on that. I think from our perspective, in terms of right there, and I wish that Matt could have come over here, because I believe this is owned by the homeowners association of Rollins Ranch.
Yeah.
And I think if you were to ask, if you don't land, if we would give permission to connect a road into our property, the answer would be yes. But because it's owned by the HOA of Rollins Ranch, we then have to get permission, I think, from everybody...
Yep, have to have 100%. I've done this.
Within Rollins Ranch. And I don't know if you've ever tried to get...
So, is that...
I'm the only one in the world who has ever gotten it done, just so you know.
What about where your arrow is, Lance? That's HOA also?
That's HOA. Excuse me. This is the one right here. This is a better map, right here. This is a parcel where, there's a grade change that's quite significant right here. So, topographically, it'd be unfeasible, but here would be...
Is that, that is HOA there too?
That's correct. Now, I will say this, what we've offered to them, and this has been quite some time ago, is to maybe, we do the trail connection to make it wide enough that you could fit an emergency services vehicle through there.
Well, I'm looking at, so at the very top of the map where it shows that Y, originally that was roundabout, and that's where that additional road was supposed to tie into you guys. No, right there where Y, right there where the intersection is, up, right there. So, originally, that was supposed to come through the four-way intersection and continue over to...
Trappers Loop.
Yes. And so, I'm just looking at it, because the way it ended up with them getting changes, I'm just looking at trying to make it feasible to get a secondary access into Rollins Ranch without creating a lot of additional traffic for your development. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
So, there is kind of emergency ingress and egress through the school property, correct?
Yeah, but emergency.
Well, but isn't this one of the...
No, I understand, there's a difference. You know, if we needed to get people in and out, or fire vehicles in, there's an emergency point of ingress and egress through your project and vice versa, in and out, and it's through the school property. And that's what ultimately, it's the school that ultimately affected the ability to take that access through there.
So, here's one thing that could offer you, and if you go to our, Lance, if you go to our concept plan, I'm certainly not opposed to stubbing the road right here.
Okay, well, the other thing is, is there is utilities in there. That is where one of Cottonwood Mutual Water wells and their line feeds up into, and ties up into there.
Well, how does that align up with your road, if you brought the road straight across and stubbed it?
I believe we could come right through this property right here.
And this third pump house?
What's that?
There's a pump house there?
Yeah.
Pump house is right there.
But does that really create the flow that you need? It seems to me that's the wrong spot.
But you would also have to, you'd also have to work with Warner's, because you're going to be crossing their agricultural access.
That's true. Okay, I guess I'm thinking it for either...
I'm more happy to do as much as I can. I can't make promises in terms of...
As far as lining it with roads.
Correct, I understand that.
I recognize that Rollins Ranch has a problem in terms of its access, I think.
So, isn't this one of the, sorry, Rollins.
Well, and that, and that's not really your responsibility to fix. I'm just asking if it is an option.
But it is, it is in interest of the county to fix it, I think, especially when you're looking at flow on plowing roads, on access, on future community connection, all of those types of things, I think it is, and it's one of those, in my opinion, one of the reasons why that, the part of the $10 is for easement. That's exactly what that money can be used for, is that by the county purchasing the right-of-way and an easement in those areas, so that we can fix some of these problems that should have been fixed in the overall planning to go, to start with. So, I'm not, I don't necessarily think all of the burden of the cost on that goes to the developer, because it is something that we've backed ourselves into.
I can do a number of things. We can try to preserve right-of-way on our side. We can put, you know, stub roads to certain places. I mean, I'm more than happy to do whatever we need to do to help fix that problem.
Well, but what about the residents who are going to build in your development?
You know, we disclose, as long as it's properly disclosed and we talk about it, I think it's much easier to...
I think having a road stubbed makes a big difference, too. If it's already there, then it's not like their HOA later on is going to say, "No, you can't do that," you know?
So many times, I've seen these so many times in the planning, when I was over planning and I had to go to all the trainings, so many times that, even now at WFRC, I see these, the funding requests coming through to connect communities together and developments together that weren't originally connected, to fix this very problem. It seems to me that it's only proactive to do it now than to wait 20 years when everybody recognizes, "Look, we're neighbors. We might as well connect."
So, one more question for you. So, on that, it shows that road stubbed down into the Warner property. So, you've been talking to them. Any idea what their, are they taking that, are they going to hook onto that and take that down to Old Highway?
Yeah, it's been a long time since we've really had meaningful discussion with them. It's probably been, I don't know, probably November of last year, when I caught Wade and we had a little discussion. We just threw the whole time, said that we would give you access there, but they're doing on theirs.
They got their rezone done in our last meeting, so if you want, now's a good time to have the discussion.
Okay.
In my view, if we're going to have him stub anything, we ought to have the engineer look at it. Your engineer could look at it as well to see where the best point would be to stub it, because there's no sense stubbing if it's not going to work engineering-wise on the other side, or if it's going to take out utilities. And if there is a good engineered solution, and then the council wanted to discuss acquiring the right-of-way necessary to make the connection, that's a public road.
Well, that right there answers the question of...
But that's into Warner's.
That's the Warner's concept that they're talking about initially, that they just threw out when they were rezoning, to see what their lot layout might be. We have discussed with them that they need to, and this is, I can't turn it for somebody, but they could extend this road straight through and still maintain that cul-de-sac, you know?
Yeah, it seems to me that those three developments right there need to have some continuity between the three, just for the future of the community.
And we do have to go through the subdivision process, where a lot of these things are sort of a part of it.
I know, I know.
Okay, well, just don't, just don't take it that I'm expecting you to fix the problem.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Real quick, one question. If we postpone this, do you want us to postpone it two weeks or four?
I would prefer two.
Okay.
Let me go back and hustle. If it ends up being four, it ends up being four.
We can postpone it again?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, that meeting's on the 21st, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we postpone this item until the meeting on the 21st.
Take it.
Okay. A motion to postpone by Member Newton, seconded by Member Kilmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Earlier, you can get us that revised draft to review.
Chair, can I request a five-minute recess?
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you for beating me to that one. Can you turn the heat up, Stacy?
No, not the heat, it's the heat left in there.
I'm sure you'll be making that, for that, the item, and it's had a conflict of interest for me to do that.
For what?
Just the district...
I'm, you're going to do what I go, I am checking in, suspending the rule. I'm, you're going to do what I go, I am checking in, suspending the rule.
If that's, that's the easier, more elegant way to do that.
Because that is, that is the sole purpose of Robert's rules, is to say, you know, we don't want, we need to suspend this particular rule. Well, not eliminating it, we're just suspending it for the time being. We're going to suspend the rule for six months.
You could set a time limit, right?
And it's over.
And I think, I think Jan's fine with extending a procedure, or suspending the procedural rule like that. What he's saying is that that comes from the form of government. If you, if you'll, just make sure you remind me, I'll make the request, right? If it feels like a conflict, then that's just, I'll make it. But if you'll let me know what you find out, because if, if we could suspend it, that's an easy, elegant way to end this.
Yes, it's done, it's need to be public, public bills for public comment, yeah.
I think, I think it would require a public hearing to change the district panel, or jury mandating, but we kind of have a reason to do it. It's only going to be relevant for the balance of your terms.
Correct.
By the time you get it done, it's only going to be five months.
Who knows if I'll even be reelected?
Do you have a Democrat running against you?
I don't know.
No.
Find a qualified person.
10 grand, 10 grand, I remember.
Yes, that, that somebody made an offer.
They made an offer, 10 grand.
Somebody made an offer?
Dave Fisher.
Oh, to get somebody to run against you.
10 grand.
Dale pays me 10 grand around the corner.
If they win.
If they win.
That'd buy him a water connection.
Probably.
Reese, we're not, we're not going to have a law now because-
I am? No, I gave him the him.
But I'm thinking we're not going there because-
Do you have two copies of this?
I did, yeah.
See, when I, when I talked to you, because you had it all, come up with-
Sorry, I'm just giving him that.
To put your name on a law. But he hadn't bought the property. Well, no, so what it did is reserve your spot.
Yeah.
Reservation.
So you reserve, you reserve your spot. But he hadn't closed the deal on the property. So it's like me, you know what? I'm going to sell spots to go camping on Robert's backyard. First, I got to buy his backyard, but I'm going to see how many reservations I get, see if I can go buy.
That's smart though, right?
I've got two slots, one against each line. We, I found one the other day, it's in our county. Hard Scrabble Canyon, where client bought the property, was driving it, comes along this big section of fence that sticks out and covers the road, and there's actually a building in there. So he knew that the people had access over the road, didn't oppose it. But this whole fenced-off area, he's like, what's this? Well, we, we own that. What are you talking about? I just bought this property, this, I owned it this section. And they got him a D. It was a quit claim, from themselves to themselves, claiming that extra property.
From the guy that they sold it to?
Well, the, the, no, it was themselves as individuals to an entity that they created. And I'm like, well, that, that's a new one. Now, I don't know if they were trying to preserve some kind of prescriptive claim that they think they may have, and we're going to find out, but-
They're arguing that, being the Texas, I don't know that.
Yeah, I've never seen prescription used to actually acquire the whole property. I've seen it, it's usually only used for roads, trails, and access and stuff like that. So, this will be an interesting one. I called the title company, I said, I don't know if I intend to reclaim on this or not. And he said, well, we'd probably take the position that it wasn't a record because it wasn't indexed against the property that my client bought, because the recorder probably didn't recognize them as owners of the property when they did. But, we'll see. Creative.
That sounds messy.
Sounds messy. Sounds sketchy.
More, more like Morgan County, more right now. I love some of the things that they do.
Let's calm, more, let's go.
Yeah, on my hands, as soon as they get back there, they'll talk about it. Yeah, we only need it five minutes. All right, I think we have four of us here. Sarah, are you still on the phone?
Should I say unfortunately?
We're good with that. Okay, we're going to go back in session. Our next item is a discussion-
These are yours, so they better be quick.
Yeah, authorization of Wasatch Civil Consulting Engineering to provide design and construction services related to the expansion of Row DD, EE, and FF hangar rows at Morgan County Airport. And just to be clear, when I say construction services, it's construction support, they're not going to be the contractor. And if you, there's, the proposal was in the packet, it's a proposal, estimated fee of $10,300. And what that's intended to do is to finish out the design of the airport. There's a diagram on the back to add in these additional hangar rows and design out that future expansion area. Mr. Garfield's here, if you want to address it quickly, feel free to do so. Joe?
Where were we planning to get these funds from? Do we have a-
I don't think this was specifically included in the airport budget.
That's what I was thinking, I didn't think it was in the budget, but just making sure.
We do, so, and, and this is some comments that we had from George Sousa with respect to it. We do have a number of these applications for leases of hangar spaces on these rows. So if we fund it out of, I always want to say the general fund, I-
Savings.
Fund balance.
The fund balance account, then I think we could be reimbursed vis-à-vis the lease payments and, and frankly, the infrastructure connection payments in connection with doing this work. There seems to be relatively high demand for hangar space over there right now, and I think that's people recognizing the scarcity of this, in terms of the overall size of our airport. This will take us to our development limit, as far as I'm aware. That is correct.
So this is, there, there's an area here that says future expansion, five acres plus or minus. Is that an area that can eventually be developed, or is this it?
Uh, no, we have plans at our advisory board for next, next week, that's going to finish out that future development.
Okay.
Is this the section outside the exits?
Uh, what's that?
Is this the section that he's talking about? Is that outside the exit?
No, it's all within the handles of the airport.
But Joe, isn't it, this, this proposal is to design this area, the future expansion. The proposal is to finish, finish- DD and EE. DD, DD, EE, and FF.
I thought DD, well, what do you mean, finish? I thought DD was already done.
We're re, we're redoing that one, we're redoing that row. Instead of having 50 by 50 hangars, 50 by 40 hangars, they're going 60 by 60 hangars. And all those hangars is going to need additional water and sewer to that row.
I'm just asking, why would you need additional water and sewer, just because you're going a little bigger building?
We're going bigger buildings, and the applicants want the water in the sewer, they want toilet. It's, it's not that we-
I thought, I thought it was already there.
Not on that DD and EE row.
It's what the gentleman's agreed on between the ones that were already there, that he had to pay for it. So it's only one area.
He, Shad did a pioneering agreement, he fronted it and recouped over time, so maybe-
That was on, that was only on the AA row.
Yeah.
However, the county has put in the infrastructure and the BDC, CC row, and DDEE row without water and sewer on that DDEE row. So that we- So that's part of what's being designed here, is the extension of those utilities up the row, so we can provide the water service.
We had, we had a hiccup on the other side, where we ran lines right through where a pad was supposed to go, on the other side of the main roads. So hopefully they'll take that into consideration, chances of, and then, and help us.
And that's what Wasatch Civil, they've got a pre, pre-design for us.
Sounds good.
And they've also been working with the future development area person, so they basically have all that done with them anyway. So, that should come before you guys make the call. The other thing that I'll just mention in connection with this, it's not on the agenda, so we can, we were going to do the crack sealing of the airport runway surfaces, and Joe's been approached by a group that wants to put a bid for a grant from the state, where if we match it and take the $7,500 that we're going to put towards that, and add $2,500 to maybe five grand to it, we'd have our percentage of the match, and we could do the crack sealing and the new surf, slurry seal, and new painting and striping. So, that will come back next time, but seems like a good way to- So we got, we got 150 grand coming from the state, I'm counting for, for runway improvement, track improvements, lots of stuff, so. So, if we're good, authorizing Wasatch Civil to move forward.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize Wasatch Civil Consulting Engineering to move forward with providing design and construction services related to the expansion of DD, EE, and FF hangar rows at the Morgan County Airport.
Second.
And where's the money coming from?
Uh, general fund, fund balance. Well, it'll come from the airport, it'll come from the airport budget, it will come from the airport budget, but we will have to transfer from the fund balance to do that.
Okay, so we had a motion by Member Newton, which was seconded by Member Valentine to approve, and authorize Wasatch, the Wasatch Civil Consulting Engineering contract. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, question?
Well, just specify where our dollars are coming from.
Coming from the general fund, fund balance.
Pay from the airport budget and funded from fund balance. Does that work for you?
Yeah, I just want it specified.
Okay. Okay, I'll call the question again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then we can bring that next one back, so, get it on the agenda. All right, next one. This is a discussion with respect to a proposal to install a speed bump on Willow Creek Road at a location to be determined by the Public Works Department, but on the public right-of-way near 6460 Willow Creek Road.
Or is that in relation to your house?
It's up the street.
Okay.
Literally up in elevation and to the north. It's where people come down out of Phase Four and onto Willow Creek Road. The grade's relatively steep, and people, I'm sure, without any intent to hurt or harm anyone, come down that road really quickly. If I'm, it's posted at 10 miles per hour, and there are people that come down at 40 or more. There's a couple guys that get out there with the speed guns and will actually measure what speed people are going.
Use a stopwatch and the power poles.
Yeah. No, they've got a radar gun.
Who has a radar?
Neighbor does.
Yeah. And, and so-
I thought they had gates that open and close automatically.
You can't put a gate there. They did talk about, they did, there was a proposal at one point to put a gate there, but it ultimately doesn't work engineering-wise. They're going to put, go ahead and install the one up on top.
So with the speed bump, when they're going that fast, does that give them enough air to clear what?
It's a ramp. So the fire chief called me, he called and said, I hear you want to put speed bumps on Silverleaf. And I said, I haven't heard that one. And he was concerned about that in terms of his fire trucks and getting access. I told him that this one would be, no, this would be on Willow Creek, told him where it was, and he says, I'm not as concerned about that there.
So my concern's snowplowing.
Well, and I talked to Brett about this, so Brett got me the bid, I asked him to do it, there are about $2,500 to put one in. If we're willing to allow one, I will go back to people on the street and solicit funds from some of them, and I think I could easily raise at least half of the amount that they would be willing to put in to just trying to slow people down. It's hard to, to get into your neighbors sometimes about how fast they're driving, but sometimes that happens as well. If I'm on my motorcycle coming down that road and just roll it in second gear, it will not stay at 10, it just rolls faster. The other, I did get a comment from someone who sent me an email today, I'll just mention what he said. He doesn't like the ideas, speed bumps, he doesn't want to see them, he would rather us do a stop sign at the intersection of Willow Creek and Hidden Hills, and he thinks that would stop them. The other place where they're moving pretty quickly is frankly right past my house. But in the wintertime, there's a pretty good dip in there, and it slows people down, and most people kind of get there. Look, I, I get it, I try to slow down in the neighborhood. I mean, I, I actually hit a kid one day that was completely his fault at night, and he was fine, but the, what you feel when you see a kid on your windshield is not comfortable for anybody. And, you know, we had a little boy in our firm that died earlier this year, being run over by one of his neighbors. And so, I would like to see us move forward, and if you guys say, we'll permit it, but you have to raise the funds, I'll go get the funds raised. If we're willing to pay a portion of it, that would be great. If you have a better solution or an idea, if there was enough room for a chicane, that would be funner, but we don't have that room.
For what?
A chicane where you go in and out.
So why can't we put a stop sign?
We could put a stop sign right there.
Well, because we're talking Willow Creek is public until you get to that point, and then it's private from there up the hill.
That's right.
So why can't we put a stop sign where they come on to the county portion of the road?
We could, if that's the, if you like that as a better option, I can take it back to them and say, we're not going to do that, we won't do the speed bump, for whatever reason, but we'll do a stop sign.
With snowplow sign point, I would rather do a stop sign.
Well, that, I mean-
Whisper Ridge, we had to remove a lot of stuff because it was causing so many issues with snowplow.
Because there should be, there's a stop sign up at the top of Silverleaf where you come off.
So it would be an issue, right? I wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, up at the top of Phase Four, going on to Silverleaf, there's a stop sign.
There's a stop sign, so why can't we, because that's all private, why can't we put a stop sign at the bottom where they come on to the county road, where we plow to?
That's, that's an option. It's an odd place for a stop sign because there's no intersecting traffic, but it's a stop sign. I, I mean, I had the sheriff come up one day, and they just wrote tickets, you know?
Well, then it's a revenue source.
I think it, I think it could rival Manaway.
Really? That's saying something. How about Beaver, though? Couldn't rival Beaver?
There, there are a lot of people who just go too fast, and part of it's just the dough coming down.
You may want to consider asking Mark Noah, just to weigh in on it, if you're, if you're down to our things, or-
If, if there's not intersecting traffic, you might have issues with the road standards, DOT road standards, because I know when we do stop signs and other stuff before, we try to follow those as much as possible. A stop sign in the middle of a road without any intersection, Darrell, do you see-
I'll ask, I'll find out, I'm not sure.
And you can talk to Brett, I did talk to him, this wouldn't be just a bump, this is one of the ones you come up that's flat and down, because I said I, because that's what I told the neighbors for, I think snowplowing might be a problem, but-
The guy that snowplows, that says it will be, is bad right there. I would leave drive that whole thing up, up on top, it's bad already, is, you know, how it is now, but-
Robert, or you might have to point out where we are at on this map.
Are we right off Silverleaf, right off Silverleaf?
No, we're up-
Comes in the back, comes in the backside.
So as you, as you come- So as you, as you come up the road, it would be right here. So this is Phase Four up here. And you come down this hill and that's the start of Phase Two.
So there, this is where you're talking about?
Yep. People, it's just that hill and people just come down.
Let's see, that's all part of the Phase Four, which is a private deal. Now, Joe, don't, doesn't the county go up Willow Creek, do the turnaround and then come back down?
Yeah, we have to raise our plow, go around, turn around, and then drop the plow again.
And plow down.
And plow down.
And then we salt it also for them, don't we?
Um, yeah. Sometimes I can't even get up and it's, it's so, it's like...
Yes, if you had to stop for a speed bump.
Okay, well...
It's sliding off towards the airport too.
I mean, frankly, if there was even one that we could put down in the spring through the fall, they, they would take it, you know?
Yeah, they have those.
The temporary, temporary. We could take it off in the winter.
But let's look at the stop sign issue as well. And if, if that works, you know, we can put a stop sign and people can deal with it. I mean, the social media comments are just, there's a problem on Silverleaf as well. People tend to drive that. But there aren't residents on both sides of Silverleaf and there aren't little kids and, you know, cars parked and, you know, it's, it's just kind of scary there. So people ask, they need permission, they're, they're not, I think I could raise the funds to have it done. We just need permission to do it.
I mean, you still need money for a stop sign, but...
How much does a stop sign cost?
Considerably less.
My opinion though, funding-wise, is if that's a problem on a county road, we need to pay for it.
Then I want a speed bump on Stoddard Lane.
I want one in front of my house.
We're doing this.
I think we could all want one, but...
I want rubble strips all the way across.
Listen, I cycle past your house and your house. I don't need any speed bump, all right? Need to keep my speed up.
Okay, well, thanks for considering that. We'll look into the stop sign issue.
I really thought that chip seal would slow down the bikers that first weekend. It didn't even touch them.
Slowed me down.
On motorcycles?
No, bicyclists.
One guy got off and was carrying his bike around it and walking through the grass and they sprayed tar through the grass. He had tar on his bike. It'd been better to ride his bike. But everybody else, they just kept on tooling and throwing up rocks and tar. I didn't think they would go when they saw him spraying that fresh tar, but they did slow down.
I stayed away from there that weekend. Two weeks, two weekends ago, was it?
On the fourth, on my bike. There was just leftover chip ceiling and I hated it.
They're doing Big Mountain right now, so if you want to go run your bike through some, you can go up there.
So we're looking at putting a stop sign at the base of, of the hill?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, won't be the exact base of the hill. At the, kind of between the, at the intersection point of Phase Four and the older Phase Two area. Okay. The next one, this one we've talked about on multiple occasions. This is the PIT policy statement I sent out to you guys. That updated one that I sent separately. This just reflects the comments of the bank and the firm that we've typically used for bond counsel. Most of the changes were eliminating the article "the" in front of Morgan County, but there were a couple substantive changes. Let me just mention those in B1 in terms of the formation of the advisory committee. They just changed the references to the county's municipal advisor and legal advisor as well as other agencies or individuals as needed. That was the addition there. I thought that was a good change. The reference to the planner in the governing document in C1. And then they added a new section four in C. "In the event the applicant proposes to create more than one public infrastructure district with respect to the same project, Morgan County may modify the above fees to account for overlapping work in the review and creation of such districts." Didn't seem like an unreasonable proposal. Capitalize applicant for consistency. Add in the, the parenthetical numerical equivalent of eight mils. And then in terms of financial plan information, they added in the kind of general qua, general requirement to say, "And anything else that may qualify as public assistance" in terms of identifying what other assistance is being proposed in connection with the project. The, the change in B5, "The district shall not pledge as security any land assets or funds to be transferred to Morgan County or any public entity that will be receiving the transfer of assets." The reason they've added that is because the PIT statute has been modified so that the PIT could ultimately own the asset. It wouldn't be a private road, but it could be a PIT-owned road under this scenario. They've been given the ability to assess for maintenance now, so that's why that's a possibility. For A, "With respect to the district budget, audit if required by statute or bond covenant," is the addition. And then in five, "Significant changes to the governing documents requiring the approval of the county, a significant change if there's a delay or disruption in the proposed construction timeline." Then they added in the addresses and that's it. So I thought those were all good changes that they proposed. I didn't view them as substantively changing the policy except in adding some positive clarity.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am, unless there's someone that has further questions or... I've read it too many times already.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the Morgan County Utah Policy Statement Establishing Public Infrastructure Districts.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve by Member Newton, seconded by Member Cannon. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm gonna say aye, because I, nay. Because I got, I took out a few questions that I need answered. I'm okay.
Okay. That motion carries six to one. Thanks for sticking with us, Sarah. Okay, next item. Tina Cannon, Discussing Decision, The Economic Development Partnership Has Recommended Updates to the Morgan Strategic Economic Plan. In terms of the review of the plan, that was removed from the agenda earlier. But the second item, Morgan County To Create a County Economic Advisory Board To Replace Morgan Economic Development Partnership Board And To Oversee the Rural Economic Development Grant Funding Used to Further the Morgan Strategic Economic Plan.
Yes, so in your, in the packet, in the Rural County Grant Program, page eleven, I'm not sure which one it is in the packet, because I made notes on mine. We are required to have five members for the grant. The first one is the county representative. The second one is a representative of a municipality in the county. Three is workforce development representative. Four is a private sector representative. Five is a member of the public who lives in the county. On the MEDP, we have had additional members to that. We have had a representative from the Business Resource Center. They work very closely with Davis Tech and have provided a lot of the continuing workforce training, the, uh, what do they call it? It's the adjustable training that Amanda does, the... Anyway, they do a lot of the business training, so they're, they have some expertise in the economic development part. We've had the school district service on there. We've also had representatives from the chamber who have served, usually two. And then we have also had State Parks is represented on there with Chris Herramoto from DNR. And he is over both East Canyon and Lost Creek? Yeah, that other, the other one and then the river. So it's always been good to have him in the discussion, especially on the tourism side of this, on the economic development side. Our meetings have been monthly. So based on that, it would be an additional, the county, the rule states that the county legislative body may also appoint additional members with experience or expertise in economic development matters. In appointing members of the CED board, the county legislative body may consider gender and socioeconomic diversity. So I am recommending an additional four members to keep it at an odd number and to keep it consistent with what we have been doing in, in those planning meetings.
So you've had nine?
No, we've had eleven, actually. But I'm recommending nine. With four, with the additional four members being a representative from the Business Resource Center, the school district, the chamber, and Division of Natural Resources, State Parks.
Okay. So we have all of those identified except for a member of the public who lives in the county, right?
Well, current, yeah, currently...
Currently, all of those entities have a representative we're just talking about.
Yeah.
So we would probably need to advertise for one more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or does somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
Unless there are any questions, Chair, I would make a motion that, that we expand the County Economic Development Advisory Board to include four additional members. One, a representative from the Business Resource Center. Two, a representative from the school district. Three, a chamber representative. And four, a representative from the Division of Natural Resources, State Parks.
And, and just a question, well, does somebody want to second?
I'll second it.
So I've got a question.
Okay.
This says that they're appointed by the county legislative body. I don't, if we voted on this in the past, I don't remember it.
No, it's never been required before.
So at this point forward, they would have to put forth their choice for representative from each of these entities and then the council would vote to approve them, is that...
I would assume so, that it's the same way we would do any of the other boards. Rec Board, Library Board, all of those that, that currently exist. The Division of Workforce Development, that's usually assigned. Yeah, and the school district has always been the superintendent. But that would be up to the council whether or not it's a member of the school board, whether it's an elected representative, the city, the same thing.
I'm not all that concerned about that. I was, procedurally, this needs to, I'm saying this needs to come back with the actual names and they have to be approved. I'm all in favor of them nominating the person that they, they...
Yeah, I think, I think the first step is to, is to create the board and then, yeah, probably bring back the names and approve all of the names.
My question does kind of go to the motion. So this is to create a county economic advisory board to replace the, the Morgan Economic Development Partnership Board and to expand it to nine members as you've indicated.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I think that's, or that's...
Any other questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Why not?
That carries. Now, I do agree with Member Kilmer that, given that approval, so if you can bring back the nominee, we can get that formally done.
So the BRC rep has always been, just for FYI, who I'll bring back, is Andrew Willis, has always been the BRC rep. The school district has always been the superintendent, unless you want to tell me if you want to request an elected member. Because I have talked to Ron Blunk about it and he is happy to serve. The chamber rep is usually the chamber president. And the Division of Natural Resources is Chris Herramoto. Then the Division of Workforce Development is Eden Johnson from Workforce Services. I don't know, Mike and I'll have to rock paper scissors over it.
Yeah, we'll need the council representative and then we have to advertise for a member from the public.
Yeah, so the private sector representative, I assume, is a business owner in the community. And Youngs is expressed...
To advertise for both of those, right?
Yeah. So that the private sector representative, I'm assuming they want a business owner, but they don't necessarily, for a business in the community, but not necessarily someone who lives in the county. And the member of the public who lives in the county separating that. But they are, the second part encourages those with knowledge of economic development and expertise.
Okay. All right. You wanted to just update us quickly on tariffs funding?
Yes, and I also forgot, if we're done with everything else, Roland and Robert were both gone from COG. We're not at COG, but on COG, we're supposed to be doing the RPO process for allocating the funding because according to the corridor preservation funds have to go back through the, not the RPO, but COG for allocation. And so they wanted that on the agenda, which would be on the twentieth. And our next meeting is not till the twentieth.
Is that the RPO agenda, that's what you're saying?
No. The, the COG meeting, because COG has to approve the allocation of the funds for corridor preservation. So they need a structure of how to allocate those funds and what we want them to look like. And then they want to start allocating those funds on the twentieth. So I'm a little worried about that one. And I'm not on the RPO, nor am I on transportation. I am just on COG, so...
Well, I am, I guess I'm still confused. Say that one more time. What is it that you're trying to get on? What's agenda you're trying to get on?
So COG wants to allocate corridor preservation funds. Because based on state code, that's who has to allocate those funds for maintenance, even for the maintenance part. So they want a criteria done for, so that they can vote to approve the criteria so they can start allocating that funding. And they want that at July's COG meeting.
They want the RPO to create that.
Not the RPO. The council has to approve it. But the RPO gives those, defines how the funds can be used. And then they gave an example of...
I think that's all done.
We've never approved it as a council, so the council has to approve it and then it has to go to COG to allocate it.
Great, maybe I'm confusing the funds we're talking about. Maybe that's the confusion.
We have the funds. We've never...
Which funds are you referring to?
The corridor preservation funds, the ten bucks.
You're not confusing those.
Yeah.
I thought that had already been done when we very first started the RPO. Now, it doesn't mean that it made it here and got approved by the council, or maybe it did. There, we went through extensive work on that type of stuff. We were back originally when that first thing happened.
Well, I can reach, I can reach out to WFRC to see what they have, but I have the example of what Buck Selder has been using on theirs, but I don't have anything...
Julie, I'll contact Julie and...
She's on maternity leave.
She's still taking my emails, but I can, I can assure you that, that the RPO will have nothing for you in time for the twentieth.
Wow. So I think that's the only reason we are scheduled to have COG.
January. Because she went on maternity leave in April and then coronavirus hit. And we have not had a meeting since and she has not had any agenda items to even call a meeting, so... But I'll talk to her. I know we discussed the corridor preservation funds and we discussed it at length in COG also.
But we've never defined what projects qualify so that you can apply for it to allocate the funds because the problem that we've got is I think Brett thinks that those, that half of the funds... Because the problem that we've got is I think Brett thinks that those, that half of the funding that we've set aside for that can be used for any project. And it can be, but it has to be allocated through COG.
Yes, that, and whether Brett understands that or not, we have had that discussion. And I know. I know because Steve and Lance were the ones putting that together. Those criteria. I know we've had those discussions.
So if we've already had them and approved them somewhere, we need to get.
Whether or not they ever made it back to be approved, I can't answer. But I know we've, we've started that process and there is a document out there somewhere.
So I see that. Anyway, so based on that, now we can go to CARES funding.
So UAC had a Zoom call a couple of weeks ago with a gentleman who's a counselor to the US Secretary of the Department of Treasury. And basically, it was just a question and answer session of county representatives asking about use of CARES Act funding. Which has been one of the main things that we've discussed a lot. You know, we have that list of ways that we can use the CARES Act funding, but it's vague. At least a lot of it. So that discussion, UAC did put together a, a written document of that and they emailed it out. I don't know if you saw that email. I think it went to all of us. But anyway, there are items on there that were things that we have, that have been discussed. And, and it at least gives me a little more, or gives us, I think, a little more guidance. I'll mention a couple of those things. They talk about, they asked about laptop computers for teleworking for a county. And they said, yes, as long as it remains a part of the county inventory. They talked about HVAC systems or cleaners for county facilities and, and said, yes, that's fine, as long as it can be installed before the end of the year. Anyway, there, there's several items in there. So the approach that we've tried to take thus far is just discussing with department heads what their needs are. Thus far, we've totaled up maybe $400,000 to $500,000. Which is not even a portion of the CARES funding that will come to us.
Can we just, can we deport them?
No, that includes, that includes a lot of things. That includes our, hopefully, some internet access money.
Okay.
There was $100,000 for that. That included $100,000 in business grant funding. We've so far gotten 10 applicants. If we, if they got the, the maximum grant, which was posted at $10,000, that's $100,000. Most of them are small, much smaller amounts. I mean, we talked about, that includes, so one of the things that's, that's interesting here. Let me see if I can find exactly how they stated it. Basically, they asked about salaries for EMTs and emergency managers. And whether that could be paid for from CARES funding. And his response was, it's assumed that their job function, at least some of those employees, has shifted to deal with COVID directly. And as such, their salaries are, are able to be paid for with CARES Act dollars. So that includes paying almost $100,000 worth of salaries to both EMTs and emergency manager.
And just, because I want to make sure we're clear on this, because one of the concerns that I have with this CARES Act funding is that we misspend it. And then we deal with those repercussions. My understanding, as I was reading through the frequently asked questions and the different things, was that it was to, it could be used for salaries. But as it applied to coronavirus, so for example, let's say we had to hire an additional custodian to come in and do additional sterilization and, and stuff throughout the day in order to maintain safe. That salary could be paid, but your custodian's doing what they do every day, all day long up until this point. If that, if, if that, let's say one of them had to come in and work overtime to get their job done because they were spending so much time doing disinfection. We could cover those overtime costs, but not just blanket pay the entire salary. Is that?
Yeah, he had, I'm trying to find.
There are some that they have assumed have switched completely.
Yeah, so here it is.
My caution back to Austin. Go ahead, Mike.
The question was, for further clarification, is it correct that even though these individuals, public health and public safety personnel, were budgeted for, the wage and benefit expenses eligible for CRF reimbursement? In other words, these are employees that we already had, we already budgeted for. And his response was correct. The language of presumption for public health and public safety employees makes clear that the treasury is not going to make you prove out for these classes of employees whether or not their responsibilities shifted. It is presumed their responsibilities have shifted. This will make the record-keeping much simpler.
So.
In other words, his, his response is, it's assumed that their, their job duties have shifted to deal with COVID. And as such, those dollars can be used for that.
So my caution always with dealing with the federal government is piggies are cute, but hogs get slaughtered. You do not want to say everyone in the police department is now dealing 100% of their time with COVID. However, there is a percentage that is a reasonable presumption of their amount of time. It is determining that reasonable percentage, which is also allocated in the funding, someone to track and, and account for the funding.
The other question was about CRF dollars being used to provide bonuses for frontline workers. His response was a bonus is not an accept, or an eligible expense. However, overtime pay and hazardous pay would be acceptable. So if we've had overtime pay for any of our employees that are dealing with COVID, that's an acceptable year.
That one I understood down as well.
So anyway, my, my suggestion is that we take this document and, and put it with all of our documents for the COVID funding. So if, at the point that they come in and do their audit, we can say, this is why we spent it this way.
I'm going one step further. We are saving the recording of him saying it. And putting it in there because, yeah. It is, it is an accurate concern to have, but it's also, as long as we are careful in the allocation and the justification, which should be part of that tracking process. This money will not get sent back to the federal government. It will go back to the state, which will allocate it out to Salt Lake and Utah County, who are asking for more today. So it will not go back.
Well, they better, they better track the overtime and.
Oh, yeah.
And do a good job of that, because if they, if they don't, we're toast.
Okay, I have a question then. What would you consider Morgan County overtime related to COVID? What, what are we doing? My fear is, you all won't be here. Bonnie's not going to be here in two years when they come to audit it. And it'll be on my plate to prove this. And so I'm trying to formulate Morgan County, March 2020. What were we doing that was overtime related, related to COVID? Just as an example.
Well.
No, that's what, that's what I'm saying as far as documenting.
Well, that's where we have put it back on the departments. And so in order for the, because regular payroll is going through the regular payroll account and the budgeted accounts, in order for this to get reimbursed, it has to be a request to that fund. This is, this person on this date, for this reason, was working overtime. That, that is the backup for the funding to be moved from this bucket to that bucket. So, and that is an ongoing spreadsheet and accounting of the process, the way you would with any other allocation. Because that is its own fund, any transfer out of that fund has to have the paperwork justifying how, the why, and the reference over why that is an acceptable point. That's part of. I understand the concern, and that's how you deal with the concern, is you have to over-document why. So that when we are no longer here, there is a backup for it. That's why when I came in today and I added my fair submission documents for the $100,000, that there's $100,000 worth of paper in the drawer. The same thing applies in spades for this one.
And to be clear, I'm not advocating or saying that we have a lot of overtime. What I'm saying is that's an eligible expense. That's been documented that it's eligible. I would say that according to this, I would assume that our emergency manager's salary is probably covered under this. Given what he said here, his, his.
Who's he? Who's this guy?
Austin.
This, this guy is the, Daniel Kowalski. He's the, he's the counselor to the Secretary of the Department of Treasury. So he's like the.
Theoretically, he, he speaks pretty broadly there. And if we could tie him down to that. Theoretically, he says all police, fire, and EMS are presumed. If that were true, then you could actually play all of those budgets out of the money, but we would want that in writing.
Like I said.
I worry about it all the time. Yeah, and I'm not pushing for that. And then the other thing is, in the original document, it makes it very clear that the county's the only one who ever gets audited. And we will get audited. So if we give businesses this money, we get audited and we have to answer for, we gave so-and-so $10,000. We get audited to say, what did they use it on? And so that's where.
Yeah, that's where the application.
Documentation comes forward, if you even choose. And it's a risky proposition for you to, you know. It's not a terrible thing if you have to kick a little of the money back to the state, because if you dispend it, dispend it, it could be a problem. So I'd just say be careful.
And that's where my concern comes from, because our original text that we all got was cameras are being used and from the CARES Act money. And I have the original document that we all got. And I went through and I highlighted everything. It's for the destruction of livestock, for overpopulation. It's for jails. It's for hospitals. And we don't have any of those things. And I didn't see anywhere where cameras were related to COVID. So my fear is that without a collaboration and you coming to these meetings, we're just finding things to spend money on. And it doesn't fit that criteria. And if you're not going to be here in two years, and maybe you will.
I go off. I'm done.
So I, just, just so you're aware, I've asked every department that, that thinks they have a hand out to, to get something out of this, to put together a list, what they think qualifies for it, and send it. I'm going to compile that list and bring it to our next council meeting. And in a work session, I'd like us to go through that list, talk about the items, decide collectively if we agree that that's an eligible expense or not. Some of those expenses are going to be things that have already happened, like, you know, we, we had to buy more PPE than we ever have for the emergency department. So some of those expenses, we've already done. Salaries, things like that. Many of those are things that we haven't spent money on, but we could potentially. And I think collectively, we can decide if those are expenses we want to use or not. But the point in bringing this up today was just to give you an update of, even if we added all of these things in, we're still way under this dollar amount. We're not talking about spending all of it. We're talking about spending a portion of it.
So next week, the school district starts meeting in committees to develop their return to school procedures based on the governor's template. I would anticipate a request for some funds because of the amount of, I keep saying sterilization, that's not the word.
Sanitation.
Sanitation.
Decontamination.
Sanitation.
Anyway, you're only talking about wiping down the doors. Because they're talking about constantly somebody walking through, wiping off doorknobs, door handles, drinking fountains, and all of that.
And the truth is, if there's additional funds here, that's an eligible expense. I don't, I don't feel a bit bad about helping the school district, providing some people to do that.
In contrast, we got 1.7 million, they got 45,000.
And the city got a big chunk as well.
Yeah, and the city's.
But the problem is, if we give the school district money and they get, and we get audited, we got to go to the school district and they got to vouch for it. So that's why I'm just saying, I'm just giving you advice to protect you.
Yeah.
That leads me to my next, my next statement, and that is, number one, they're already tracking their 45,000. They have to track it. So they, they're going to have a way in place to do that. And I think that whatever those funds are, it, maybe we ought to look at, if, if it is hiring somebody to do that, maybe we do that through the county. And that's their job, is to sanitize the schools from now till December.
And then we track the temperatures.
So I, are you talking about hiring through the county someone to go disinfect it?
I'm saying to mitigate Jan's concerns, if we were to hire that person through the county to work in those things, then we're tracking it rather than relying on the school to track it. Then they can't send them out to mow the lawns, because they don't work for them.
Right.
Their job is to just sanitize the schools and they work for the county.
That, it just spurred the reminder that Weaver County is actually contracted with Davis Tech Center to provide someone to do the tracking of the funding. So that they've gone out of house to have someone who, that's just what they do for Weaver County, is in a tracking of the funds. Of course, they are talking about 40 million here.
Right.
Just in their business grounds, it's 40 million. So they're dealing with a lot of extra money. But, but we work with Davis Tech on multiple things through, through economic development. I think that is a resource that we would have available, but would take some of this pressure off in making sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
And I will mention that he, he did specifically call out, one of the questions was about using dollars to cover the administrative costs for programs to support county economic development efforts. So when you talk about the grant funding, and they said, for example, a county wanting to contract for the deployment of dollars or review of applications. And, and he says, absolutely, that's a, that's a allowable expense. In other words, if we, if we're giving out grant funding, we could pay someone to do the follow-up with those businesses and, and ensure that they're spending the funds correctly and get that documentation that, that we want to make sure we have.
And it has to be spent by the December deadline too, as I saw. So it can't be spent into the future. And so there is a caveat, if you hire someone, if you hire someone to take temperatures in the school.
December 31st, I think.
They could do it up until that deadline. And after that, it'd be.
I think it was like November 20th and then December 40th, you had to have it all delivered back to the state.
They extended it when the, not too long ago. And I think you're going to see an extension again of the dates.
It's December 31st, as far as I know, right now.
Yeah, because originally, the dates, even on the PPP, PPP was the end of May. But we've extended that now. So it.
All right, that's it. Thanks for the update.
Hey, Robert, I think I found that.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Did you guys want to know the other reason on the cameras or did you care?
Oh.
You can adjourn.
Yeah, we probably should.
Thank you for the road improvement, although they are speeding up now. I lived there for 10 years. It had a chip ceiling like 2000, 2003. I can't remember the exact year. That was it. So it's a big major improvement. We appreciate it.
17 years. All right, thanks. Good, I'm glad.
Who's, who's familiar with how?
Stop signs about 125.
Oh, okay.
So. You could put the stop sign there. Well, it's a face for.
Do you guys want to know the reason for the cameras or do you care?
I'm, I'm just curious.
You come out of that private developed part and then onto Willow Peak, which is public county.
Yeah, so put it right there.
So Stacy, when are the now?
So on this insurance application?
Are we going to wait here?
We're going to do another thing?
So I'm assuming that I'm checking accept on these different things. The airport liability, the TRIA, and the war.
So how did you, how did you get all the signatures?
Well, okay.
On, where is it, what is it here?
Well, that, that doesn't have a signature.
I text Jeremy. He said he was tired and falling asleep. He's texting when we were done, so I texted.
So I had, I've signed this in the places where there's lines for me to sign. I didn't, it, this is like where, like at the start of the session.
What, it takes a long?
And I didn't know if I was supposed to mark accept.
Everyone else.
So will somebody check that? Okay. And then will you just check with them? We do have someone who wants to potentially do a fuel station.
Okay.
At the airport. But they were told they would have to cover the additional cost of insurance to do a fuel station. And they asked me to find out what that would be.
Okay.
Rest of that's trash, Stacy.
What's that?
The rest of that.
And when I say a fuel station, it would be an above-ground fuel tank. You know, they'd build in the cement thing underneath it to catch fuel spills and stubby. It's not a big thing. It's whatever, 250, 500-gallon tank of air, of air fuel. There is a group that wants to do it.
I actually, I think you'd sell a lot to people who don't even have airplanes, want to buy it for small engines.
Yeah.
Because that fuel is awesome. It doesn't, doesn't blow out.
Yep.
You see, he is awesome. There's not a drop of ethanol in it.
Exactly.
It's high on pain, and it doesn't, doesn't end up poor.
I don't know why they keep giving me this, because I don't think Elon wants to pay for this, because we're neither going to do that CRA. Okay, can you do it everybody?
Two votes. That's two votes election.
It's going to be close.
All right. I won't be here, so I'm just kidding. I'm a little worried about how your next council's lining up for you.
Yep. All my powers of persuasion.
I'm really sad about my reaction.
I think she would have been great.
I don't know anyone who voted for the anti, Sarah and Mike told me they didn't care for me. Carol Ralphs and the anti anything group of Mountain Green campaigned pretty hard against her.